The Shreveport City Council meeting is now being called to order. We will have the invocation by Councilman James Green and we will have our pledge led by Councilman Flur. You stand, please.
Thank you, God, for this day and thank you for this opportunity. Another day to do good in our city for the citizens of this great city of ours and we thank you for every good and perfect gift. Thank you for all of these that have come today and thank you even for these interns that have worked this summer who have been in every aspect of our government. We thank you for them and let that knowledge go with them forever. But as we transact your business today, give us the wisdom and the knowledge to do good and after we finish, let us do some good and let it be to give you some glory. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen. Please join with me in the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, will you call her over, please?
Councilwoman Brackler.
President.
Councilwoman Fuller.
Present.
Councilwoman Nicholson.
President.
Councilwoman Butcher.
Here.
Councilwoman Flur.
Here.
And Councilwoman Bowman.
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the past legislative conference in the city council meeting? It's been moved by Councilman Green and seconded by Councilman Butcher. Please vote. That motion, pass it with the Senate. Is there a council member that has any awards or recognition, distinct guest?
Chair.
I did have Councilman Flur and then Councilman Green.
Members of the council, the members that are here today as guests, I've asked for this time from the chairman to talk about our bond issue that's coming up and I'm talking about streets and drainage. I think we need to, as we begin the process, which I know we have a lot of work to do in streets and drainage. And what I've done today is I have taken a sample this past few days I've been out in about the city of Shreveport. I had a plan at one time of us all joining together on Sportran and touring each other's districts so that we would have an idea, firsthand knowledge of where we are in this city on streets and drainage. But that hasn't worked out. We have, our schedules have been busy. So I went about, made some pictures and I want to first tell you that we need to know about the facts, where we are today. We have right now, based on the data that we have on the website, 3,650 miles of streets and drainage in this city. We have approximately $6,336,200 in the budget. If you take 5,280 linear feet, divide that by your miles, you'll come up with about $1,765 per mile that we have to maintain. And if you calculate that out, that gives the city of Shreveport 33 cents a foot to maintain streets and drainage. 33 cents. Now ladies and gentlemen, that's not near enough money. And so I brought today some photos that I want you to look at because our drainage ditches are, let's see, I believe you can see that. We had a young man, a child, lose its life in the first four years I was on the council. Mr. Brackler, you remember?
Yes, sir.
And we promised the citizens of Shreveport that we were going to cut and maintain our drainage ditches. And as you can see, there's a sample of it. Now I'm not here to blame anyone in particular, but what I'm saying going forward, we've got to do a better job. We've got to maintain because our drainage ditches indirectly have a direct correlation to our water and sewer. People often ask me, what can I do as a citizen today to help with our consent decree? I say, look, you can tell your yard man or you can tell those that cut your yard, do not push those clippings into the street. Because ladies and gentlemen, whether you know it or not, that goes right on down into the sewer pipe and stops up our drainage. We can ask all of our citizens today, you can start by not putting your clippings into the street. We see it all the time, people blowing into the street. It's a small thing, but yet it is an enormous thing because it affects our sewer pipe, our drainage. Now, this is in one sample there, I wanted to also show you that I went more than this one place. It's over, it's all over. Members of council, can y'all see that on the screen? We just simply have not done what we needed to do on maintaining our drainage. No criticism, but what we've got to say is we've got to do better than what we've been doing. We've got to come up with a plan. You see, here's one right here that is, these concrete panels. I encourage, I'm not the engineer on this, going forward on this bond issue, but I'm telling you, we have to think outside the box. Are the concrete panels absolute answer? Do we need to use something they call rip route, a car rock that you lay down? I mean, is this the best solution, concrete panel? What's happened as of yesterday, in Southern Hills, we had one of these huge panels that break off and fall. Thank goodness, praise the Lord, that there wasn't somebody walking in this panel and it fell on top of them. We just recently, thanks to Mayor Perkins, I had a sinkhole out there that Councilman Green's car would fit in. And the mayor helped me get that fixed, but it was huge sinkhole. Then, the last thing I want to say, and you all can experiment, tell me that you have this in your area, we got some of the biggest rats and snakes because we're not able to get up and cut. And we've got to do that. We've got to maintain. How can we ask the citizens of Shreveport to abide by property standards when the city has failed to cut its own property? I hope as we go forward, that we will talk a lot, lots been said already about this bond issue, but I'm here with urgency in my voice to tell you that Proposition A has got to be streets and drainage. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Flur. Councilman Green.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I know the mayor's going to do it later, but I'd just like to recognize my grandson that's a part of the summer intern, Nicholas Johnson. Stand up, Meg, so they know that I got a grandson. All right. Thank you, Ms. Chair.
All right, thank you. Any other council member this time?
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to say you saved me a lot of money this summer.
All right. Mayor Perkins, do you have any distinct guests or?
I do. Nicholas was already acknowledged, but let me get to everybody else. I would like to recognize my special guest, students in the Future Leader of Shreveport Summer Internship Program. I always say when mentioning this program, it's not just a summer internship program. This program was an investment into the future of Shreveport. It lets our young people know that the city cares about them and lets our young people know that we're investing in them and opportunities for them in the future. We grew the program this year from 20 to more than 150 students. This effort would not have been possible without the support of our team over at Community Development with key players like Penny Butler. Can you stand up as well as I mention your name? It's Penny here, Penny Butler. And Monae Bryant. And their fearless leader, Ms. Bonnie Moore. Is Bonnie in the, she's not here, okay. The interns' last day will be this Friday. At this time, I would like to have Mackenzie Brown come up and give us an overview of the program.
Hi, I just wanted to come up and thank Mayor Perkins, the city council, and everyone else who is involved in allowing me and all the other interns to be able to participate in the program. I've been working in the office of the mayor for the past eight weeks. It's been a great experience for me. I know it's been a great experience for all the other interns here today. Like Mayor Perkins said, a lot more opportunity this year than there used to be. Yeah, there's like over 100 now. There used to be a lot less. As you can see, just by looking at the room, not even everyone's here and it's still a huge amount of people. It's been really great to be, get the opportunity to get involved in Shreveport city government and to learn more about the city, how the city works. Me and three other interns have been in the mayor's office, but people have been in all over the city. There's people in the Parks Department, fire, legal, medical, IT, police, water and sewerage. So there's been a bunch of different paths that people have been able to see. I personally have been able to learn more about how the census works in the city, how the city government communicates with the outside world, and ways to make our community more resilient. I know other people have been working on stuff like making PSA videos for the city, working on testing the city's water, making sure it's safe, and working with city planning authorities. So we've just all been doing really different things, but I know we've all met new people and learned skills that we wouldn't have learned otherwise. Yeah, like from the beginning, during orientation, we learned about financial literacy and how to go to interviews. And just last week, we got to go on a tour where we visited and learned about all the different departments in the city, fire, police, water treatment. So that was a really great learning experience. So overall, it's just been really great. I know everyone's learned a lot more about how the city works and so thanks again to all the amazing work everyone's been putting in to make this happen. So, thank you all.
Thank you, Mackenzie. Mackenzie's going into her junior year at Tulane University, by the way. She didn't tell that, brag about herself very much. These are all outstanding students with bright futures and at this time, I would like to announce that two of them have been chosen to go to the U.S. Conference of Mayors National Youth Summit in Los Angeles, California. Those two are Mackenzie Brown and Zayge Wills. Can you two stand up? They will represent Shreveport later this week, July 25th through the 27th at the summit. I would also like to announce the intern who won the best design for the T-shirt contest. Congratulations to Lauren McCray. Can Lauren stand up, please? Okay, is she not here? Okay, well, this is the, this is the desire for the shirt. I would like to take the time to applaud our young people in our SPAR Track and Field Program as well. They have already left, but they will be competing in the US ATF Hershey National Junior Olympic Track and Field Championship, which will be held this week, July 22nd through the 28th in Sacramento, California. And they will be competing against the top kids in the country, so let's all wish them luck. Patrick Furlong, could you please come up at this time and give us an update on the concern of the consent decree project at Willard and 60th Street?
Yes, sir. A few weeks ago, a concern was brought up by the city council about a concern that a pipe was lined and then filled with concrete and then we laid a pipe by open, open cut, essentially doing work on the same pipe segment twice and wasting money. We researched it, we investigated, we reached out to the contractor that reported this and we found that that was not the case. The contractor who thought that this happened, you know, getting back with him, they provide TV services, camera services, so they went in initially, initially, initially this project was a lining project, a CIPP project. So they did go in and TV it before any work was done. Then they returned to the site months later and it was filled with concrete. It was changed from a CIPP project to an open cut project. So that change did occur, but no work was ever done on the pipe. It was never lined. So they assumed that it was lined when it was filled with concrete, but it wasn't. We've been working with Barbara with internal audit on this. She's looking into it. She spent probably days with our staff, kind of seeing, how do you research this? And, you know, what kind of documents and what kind of tracking system do you have? And she's jumped into it and she sees everything that we've seen. You know, I can't speak for her, but I know that she hasn't, her findings are the same as mine at this point. She does not have a determination. She says that's only at the time of a report and at some point in time, she'll get a report to the council. So I just wanted to give you all an update on what we found. Are there any questions?
Councilman Butcher. So this has not happened anywhere in the city or are we just talking about this specific 60th and Willard?
I've reached out to the contractor who reported this and this was the only location that they knew of.
So basically what happened, I'm just trying to kind of understand, decided not to do the liner, what was it called?
CIPP, cured and placed pipe.
Cured and placed. So they decided not to do that. The engineer decided to do a new pipe.
Correct.
So they fill this old pipe with concrete.
It was abandoned.
Okay. So is that typical? Do they usually do that?
That is typical. When you're laying a new pipe, you have the old pipe in place and you need to abandon it properly, you need to fill it with concrete or remove it. Filling it with concrete's a lot cheaper.
Okay.
Because you can't leave an old pipe in place or eventually it will collapse and start taking dirt and there'll be sinkholes everywhere.
Right.
So that is standard procedure.
So basically, this was just misinformation that was reported, yeah?
Yes, and I've talked to the contractor to kind of see how he might have thought this, just with the limited information that he had.
So basically, when he went to do the TV service on it, originally it needed it, so he goes back after the work's supposedly done, it's concreted, so he felt like it was abandoned and?
He was probably not aware that it did move from projects, it did move from CIPP to open cut. The subcontractor wasn't privy to that information, so he probably didn't know that. So he's just showing up, he sees the pipe that he TV'd and he thought was an aligning project, he saw that it was filled with concrete.
Gotcha.
That's, all right.
Okay. Thank you for the update, I appreciate that. Mayor, thank you for updating us.
No problem.
Thank you, Councilman Butcher. Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Furlong, how, I think it might, is it safe to say that the way that we used to review with our outgoing project manager, the way that we reviewed each piece of a project is sort of, was kind of cumbersome? Like maybe going from like a spreadsheet, going from what's reported is done and then looking at what was supposed to be done and basically trying to balance those things out against each other?
Yes.
Is any of that, is that going to be changing as we move forward?
Yes.
So it's going to be more streamlined process for that?
More streamlined, geospatial based, that's a fancy word for map based.
How many people had hands and eyes on those reports when they were going through to check and double check what, so that we were paying for what was actually done and not duplicating?
I mean, it's.
A bunch, right?
A bunch. There's just so many layers and so many people involved.
But with that much oversight, is probably safe to say that for the most part, duplications were probably caught through that process?
They should have been, yes.
Okay. That's it for now, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Fuller. Vice Chair Nicholson.
Mr. Furlong, I understand that when an engineering project is completed or construction projects are completed, ASBILs are produced, these are maps or drawings of what actually was constructed, is that right?
Yes, sir.
For what part of the completed consent decree work does the city have ASBILs?
They're still working on Phase One, the ASBILs for Phase One. That's pretty much the last, the last step in the process of construction. And we get, we get the data that the inspector took while he was in the field and then we have the data that the contractor took while they were in the field and they're required to provide certain data and then that's given to the engineer and the engineer compiles that data on a set of ASBILs.
What is the lag time between the completion of a given project for the consent decree and the provision of ASBILs to the city?
I can tell you it's too long and that's something we're working on.
How long has too long been historically?
Probably six months to a year.
We're halfway through Phase Two right now. You're telling me you don't have all?
We don't have all of Phase One, we have some of it.
I would be a little punchy about that. Stabby.
It's something we're working through. And not only are they putting the drawings together, but they're putting all the data into GIS at the same time, so it's.
So we have hope for the future.
Oh, we're making big changes. There's no doubt.
What, in terms of your goal or your target for that, the time between the completion of a project and the provision of ASBILs, what's the target?
It should be several months, three months, something like that. That's reasonable.
And I mean, I ask because if we, if we have those ASBILs in hand and we know what has actually been done on a given project and that will help us avoid confusion about what has been done where. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Furlong.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. I see we have standing room only, so I'm going to quickly go back to recognize all the students that participated in this summer's program and allow them to leave after we give them a round of applause because they are off work right now. All right, thank you so much for what you did for the city this summer. We appreciate you, we love you. Now y'all can, y'all can go, I know you're off work and ready to get out of here. As they exit the chambers and we start to settle down, I'd like to call up Burns and McDonald, our new project manager, for the consent decree to come forward at this time with updates on the transition and to answer any questions from council.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Chairman, members of the council, my name is Ron Coker with Burns McDonald. I'm Senior Vice President over the Water Practice for Burns and Mac. I have a few guests up here with me, I'll let them introduce themselves as well.
Mr. Chair, appreciate you allowing us to come in and say a few words, Mr. Vice Chair as well as the mayor. Thank you for allowing us to come forward and say a few words. My name is Darius Bonton. I own Bonton Associates. We are a water-focused Louisiana-based engineering firm and we're proud of the work that we've done here for the city of Shreveport dating back to 2015 and looking forward to delivering this program to completion. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for having us today. Mayor Perkins, administration, Chairman Bowman, Vice Chair Nicholson, councilman and council lady. My name's Drayton Dunn, owner and operator in Vision Media and Marketing. I'll be heading up the communications program in media as well as the public outreach and community outreach portion of the consent decree. Of course, I'm a Shreveport resident, born and raised, and I look forward to just coming in and really giving information to the public and changing the rebranding in the current way that we communicate with the public. Thank you.
Thanks. And then one final member of our team, Cody Gilery apologizes she could not be here today, but her firm is one of our three partners as well. Have a very brief presentation for you today, but happy to answer any questions as we go forward. And I see the fonts changed a bit on our presentation, so if we have some funny looking things up there, that's, that would be the reason. So real quick about Burns and Mac. Burns McDonald's an old company, it was founded in 1898, it's 121 years old. It was actually founded to support cities just like Shreveport in the development of their water systems and their power systems. It's grown over the years to really encompass all kinds of infrastructure and facilities. I've actually read a report that Burns McDonald did for the city of Shreveport back in the 50s on evaluation of their sewer system. So we even touched the city of Shreveport in our past as well. The company has about 7,000 employees, almost $4 billion in revenues. Half of those revenues are construction, so we do both design and construction, which is one of the, I think one of the values that we bring to program management is we understand both sides of that equation very well. Just a few stats, just a few stats to look at as well. Firm is, has a large presence in Texas and Louisiana and is ranked number one in that market, number nine, or a top 10 firm overall, and number 11 in program management as well. So Burns McDonald is certainly happy to have our partners here, so we have the three partners that we talked about. Just for the council's information, the way that we structured this partnership is, we set it up so that Burns and Mac was about 50% of the project and then the other 50% of this program would be delivered by fair share firms registered here in Shreveport. So let's talk about transition just a bit. So our 2019 contract has been executed, as you're aware, that's a partial year contract, but we'll do an annual contract, so I'm sure we'll be back up to discuss next year's contract in the not-too-distant future. We have a new Shreveport office that is under construction. Darius, would you like just to say a few words about the office?
So we had the opportunity to sit in the Infrastructure Committee meeting this morning and the director of the Downtown Development District actually spoke about investment in downtown and so we're proud to say that, that we're actually in the middle of a build-out there at Louisiana Tower. It's about $120,000 build-out of a 6,000 square foot space there to house the entire program. And so we're looking forward to it, investing in downtown Shreveport and then again, continuing with delivery of the program.
Just a little bit about transition of the program. So I know that you all are aware you have two program managers at this point in time, right? You're transitioning one in and one out. That transition was really set up across about a 90-day window and the goal, as we laid out the transition, was for your current program manager, CDM, to focus on trying to reach completion on the Phase One and Phase Two construction projects or focus on what they'd already started and try and move those as far down the path as they could and really let the Burns McDonald team then focus on what's coming at you, which is Phase Three construction and Phase Four design. So that's really where our focus is right now. Slide's a bit cut off, but what that last bullet says is, we've recognized that by the end of August, they're not going to be done with all of the Phase One and Phase Two projects, so we'll start a project-by-project transition of those projects over the next six or seven weeks as well to make sure we have a smooth, a smooth handoff or as smooth of hand, as handoff as possible. Real quick on experience, again, we're cut off just a bit, but we have a large amount of program experience. We manage about $15 billion in programs with several consent decree programs. We both developed and managed the Smart Sewer Program in Kansas City. That's a $4.5 billion consent program that spreads over 25 years for both combined and separate sewer systems. You have a separate sewer system here in Shreveport. Some cities, if, older cities will have both, a combined system that holds wastewater and stormwater and a separate system that holds only wastewater as we go forward, so, or, excuse me, as the city developed. We also manage two of the, two of the Three Basins in St. Louis, that's a very large program, $8 billion. We're the program manager for the Unified Government of Kansas City, Kansas. It's about an $800 million program. We're the program manager for the city of Jackson's Consent Program, that's about an $800 million program. Bonton supported Baton Rouge's program as well. They weren't the lead program manager, but they have experience in Baton Rouge's program. And then finally, we're helping the city of Fort Smith, Arkansas with renegotiation of their consent decree, which is, which is in the same region as Shreveport, same EPA region. So out of those, out of those projects and including Shreveport, we've got five programs under renegotiation or negotiation with EPA in three different EPA regions, which is a fairly substantial amount. We think that's valuable because we can provide Shreveport information related to, related to challenges that they may have as you go down this path. Real quickly on the consent decree, so you guys, I'm sure, know your consent decree, but it's focused on reducing sanitary sewer overflows or eliminating sanitary sewer overflows or overflows out of your sewer system. That happens when you have rainfall and you have infiltration and inflow into the sewer system. The sewer system reaches capacity, just like your bathtub at home, and once it reaches capacity, it might overflow to relieve itself. So your consent decree is targeted at eliminating those overflows. It's a, it's a pretty stringent consent decree. It requires you to fix all defects that you find in the system. You have got nine years to work your way through the system in five phases. That's a high bar. All defects is a high bar and that's, that's certainly created challenges, I think, for the city. Then after year nine, you've got essentially three years to go back and review your system and fix any repairs in the first three phases that you're, that you detect now. You also have to construct capacity projects, or what you may have heard are called capacity projects, which are any projects needed to provide additional. projects, which are any projects needed to provide additional capacity, either in system or in the plant, to prevent overflows from occurring. So, those can be rather substantial. The numbers I've heard thus far in Shreveport are about $250 million worth of capacity projects, so they'll be a big part of your program. I know your program, you've heard numbers thrown around. We talked about them a bit this morning at the Infrastructure Committee meeting, being a billion-dollar program. That's really one of the first things we're going to look at, is where you are cost-wise in your program. We know it was about $350 million is where you thought the system was when you started this process. Obviously, the system was in much worse shape than you thought when you began. Thus, the reason for that price increase as you've come forward. The good thing is that you're investing that in your system, right? The challenge is that you never planned for this much investment into your system. So, one of the first things I think that we need to do as your program manager is really understand where your cost estimates are and where your overall program schedule is, so that you have a good understanding of what's out on the horizon, and better know how that's going to affect the ratepayers and the citizens of Shreveport as we go forward. So, gosh, this looks so good on my PowerPoint. My apologies for how it looks on your screen. Real quickly, we break projects into about seven phases, every project into about seven phases. These are those phases: planning, pre-design, design, right-of-way procurement, construction, and closeout. And then, we look at how we can streamline or optimize projects through those phases as we go forward. Darius, you want to walk through, real quick, the project delivery stuff?
All right. So, as Ron said, I'll attempt to walk you guys through what we've done so far with regard to evaluating the current processes that support each one of these project delivery phases. We'll hit the high points. If there are any questions that I don't cover, we've got our entire team here, which I should probably acknowledge, but in the spirit of interns, we actually had our own intern program, which we're proud of. Guys, would you mind standing up? So, this is Mr. Mayor Perkins, Mr. Chris London. Both of these gentlemen are upperclassmen at Louisiana Tech, civil engineering majors, and so they've had an opportunity to observe firsthand what it looks like to deliver massive sewer infrastructure. And the young lady that's standing next to him is Ms. China McClinton, who is a recent graduate of Cato Magnet that we're super proud to have participating on the program. And she's an upcoming freshman at LSU in civil engineering, and so we're super proud of her, for her to be involved in the program, and she'll be able to continue along with Bonton Associates at our Baton Rouge office while she's in school, so. So, real quick, just to hit some of the high points of what we've evaluated. So, on the planning side of things, you guys have in BKI, a planning consultant that essentially evaluates all of your sewer system and makes recommendations on what to do with that sewer system at the tune of about a million linear feet per phase. What happens is, they go on record as to what their recommendations are every phase, and send that to the EPA, at which point, those recommendations come to the program. They may or may not be reevaluated and manipulated before going to the engineers, where they reevaluate it again. And so, right away, we saw an opportunity to streamline the system, and so we've integrated the design consultants in the program earlier in that process, and we're interfacing with BKI early on, so that we develop recommendations once, and what we send to the EPA is representative of what's actually going to get designed and built. Next, during pre-design, our goal there was to create a more consistent deliverable, and so we are implementing standard design guidelines, as well as standard design templates, drawing templates, so that the deliverables that come out of the design process look the same across all engineers, and so the contractors are used to seeing the same type of plans. Also during design, and I'm going to let Mr. Dunn come up and explain how we're interfacing with the public much, much sooner in the process, and so that we can carry those insights forward during design.
Thank you, Darius. So, when it comes to the communications and public outreach part of the program, it's really a two-fold situation that we have, and we're going to have a plan of action for that. The big part is community outreach, and actually taking the educational approach, and just coming in and interfacing with the general public, and just educating them on the consent decree from a macro to a micro perspective. As far as the macro perspective, the everyday citizen really doesn't know a lot about the consent decree and how the sewage works, so we want to make sure that we have larger meetings and then collaborate with the entities that we have available to us, whether that's the council, commission, law enforcement, the fire, the school board, and kind of bring everyone in and kind of give them just an overview of what the consent decree is. As we move from design and kind of get with the contractors and understand that, hey, we're going to go ahead and start physically placing your nest in your neighborhood, in your home, we want to give you opportunity to meet the contractors and the people that are going to be doing the work. That way, you guys feel comfortable, and you can understand what's going on and kind of already have it on your radar. So, it's very important, and that's something that we haven't implemented before. The second part is real important, it's the communication aspect for issue resolution. Currently, there's a lot of things going on, and I've been attached to a bunch of email chains from Flower Power and other entities that have a lot of things, and it's just email chains and email chains. We're going to centralize the issue resolution for the constituents, and then be able to give you reports on a daily or weekly or monthly basis, something that kind of tells you the story and gives you status updates, and it's going to, we're going to really lean on the technology for that. We're also going to bring in the Chief Technology Officer, Keith Hanson. We've been in discussions with them, and we're going to implement some constituent issue resolution with the 411 that we're getting ready to launch. This would pretty much make everything more efficient and have a quicker turnaround time for when the constituents have a problem with restoration. So, those are pretty much the two main aspects of the communication outreach, in addition to leveraging social media, and also just reporting and reporting and reporting. And that way, we can have, mic is out, that way we can have more transparency and be able to give you that. Thank you.
I think they were saying it's time to quit talking. So, I'll just pick up real quickly on the...
Check, see if that mic is on right here.
I believe it came back on. At least, it sounds like it is. Real quickly on procurement and construction. One of the things that you'll see in the next phase of construction that's getting ready to bid is adjusting the schedule on the procurement packages, so that we're allowing contractors to bid work not all at the same time. Right now, the plan was to bid 14 projects all at the same time, essentially. We're going to lay that schedule back, so contractors have a chance to bid, see the results before they have to bid the next round. We think that'll bring more competition into your bidding processes. We're also going to address the contract duration of those construction projects. Right now, the amount of repairs that you have, it's not really conducive for an 11-month schedule, so we're going to stretch that schedule out. We believe that'll give you better bidding and ultimately better pricing as well in that program. And then, real quickly, if we can go back to the PowerPoint, because I think this certainly relates to a little bit about what you were talking about, Councilwoman, previously, which is, how do I take all this data? So, the city's accumulated 30 terabytes of data thus far on this program, so it's hard to imagine what a terabyte is, but it's 1,000 little 1-gigabyte jump drives, or it's equivalent of 9 million photographs in file size that the city has accumulated. And the only thing worse than not having data about your system is having data and not knowing what's in the data about your system. So, really, one of the early focus points that our team will have related to data management is, how can we visualize, or how can we better understand what's in that data, so that the city can use that data moving forward? So, this is just some of the early dashboards that are under development. I believe this one's on manhole repair. You can also start to look, Patrick talked about geospatially, so with the interface back to the GIS system, you can start to look at, oh, here are my sewer segments, and here's the condition of those segments, so that I know better where I am and what is needed as we move forward. And then, you can even incorporate that into mobile apps, so that as I am out on the job site, or my inspector's out on the job site, I've got ability to look back into the system to see not just what the system looks like, but I could see things like what was agreed to in the Servitude acquisition, so that I better understand what my requirements are as a contractor there. Or, you could jump into what Drayton talked about, which is constituent questions or issues coming in from the field, so that we can track those, visualize those, and use those. That's just something that we found on programs is very important, to get a visual of the system and a visual of the program, so that all of the entities that are touching it can better interface with the program as a whole. So, real quickly, next 90 days, we're going to spend some time updating the city's financial capability assessment and a long-term financial plan. This relates to exactly what was asked at this morning's meeting related to the overall cost of the program. Not just the cost, though, but the city's capacity to pay for that program as well. Developing baseline schedules and cost forecasts. We'll be updating the Phase 3 contract documents and start procurement. Procurement for Phase 3 will occur this fall. We'll be scoping Phase 4 and kicking off design contracts this fall as well. And then, we'll begin transition in July and August of the Phase 1, 2 construction projects, and then we'll support the city in any regulatory discussions they may have. What dropped off of that, I think, is establish the program office, start up a new customer interface, which Drayton talked about, which we're trying to move forward in the program and continue staff transition. So, that's what I have for you today. My apologies for the duration. I promised to be shorter, and I promise that the presentation will come across as it was intended next time I'm in front of you. Any questions? Councilman Nicholson.
Gentlemen, first, let me thank you for being here today, and I'll commend the administration for putting together a team that, in my view, has both the capacity and the expertise to meet the significant challenges that the city of Shreveport faces in connection with its compliance with the consent decree work. I know you have some work to do to get up to speed, as any team would new to our city and to this project. My first request of you is that after you've completed your initial 90-day assessment that you've described to us, that you come back to us and give us a report on where things stand, and in particular, on what you anticipate the project is going to cost as a whole. As you're aware, the city council learned several months ago that this project would cost hundreds of millions of dollars more than had initially been estimated, and my first and most important request is that the council, as the city's governing authority, not be surprised like that again. We are responsible for approving all the expenditures that will make this work possible, and to make responsible decisions about how to spend the city's money. We have to be kept up to date. You've committed to doing that during our infrastructure meeting this morning, which I appreciate, but I'll say for the audience today that that's a very important piece of this from my perspective, and I appreciate that you're going to do that. In terms of the public's interface with the consent decree work, over the past several months, I have received numerous calls from constituents in my district who have said things to me like, "The city or its contractors tore up my yard six months ago, and I called for two months, and nobody answered my call." And eventually, I got somebody, and they said they'd sent somebody out to fix the work, and then they didn't. And then, they sent somebody, and they did the work poorly, and it had to be redone. I know surface restoration is challenging, but I hope that when a citizen calls our new team, whoever's responsible for that, that somebody always answers the phone, that citizens are treated respectfully in all cases, and that we address their concerns in a reasonable amount of time. There's no excuse for people not to be able to get a hold of the city's representatives or for their yards to remain torn up for months at a time. I'm hopeful that that's not going to happen with our new management of the consent decree project. You've talked a little bit about the manner in which you're going to manage and track the work on the consent decree project. I was a little bit concerned when I heard earlier this year that we tracked hundreds of millions of dollars of work with the equivalent of Excel spreadsheets. I hear you saying that you have a more sophisticated method of tracking the work that we have done. Is that right?
Yes, yes, sir.
And I'm glad to hear that, because I want us to have at our disposal the latest technology as we conclude this, which will be the largest capital improvement project in the city's history, and I hope that you will leverage all the experience you have around the country and around the world, working on a project of this nature, to make sure that we can make appropriate use of our data and know what we have done and what we need to do. And then, finally, I would request that you make every effort to help contractors avoid stepping on the work of the city and other utilities and contractors who are doing work on our roads. I've received many calls over the past six months from people who have told me, you know, "The city just tore up my road," or "They just paved my road, and now it's torn up again." That creates the perception that we're wasting the public's money. I know some of that is inevitable, but it's happened more than it should have in the past, and so I hope that you and the administration will do everything you can to make sure that we are not working on roads and then tearing them up a month later. But, thank you all for being here. Look forward to seeing your work, and thank you for your commitment to the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Nicholson. Councilman Bruff.
Did you want to respond to anything Councilman Nicholson said before I asked you a couple of questions?
No, I might simply say, with respect to restoration, we have a lot of ongoing projects that are right at the end of their life, so you're going to see two different kinds of restoration, I think, as applied. The first set on trying to finish these projects up. We'll do the best job we can on getting those situations identified and addressed as we go forward. In the next phase of construction, one of the strategies in construction is not to try and catch the restoration in the inspection part of the project, but instead to put in place limits on how much the contractor can tear up, or how far the contractor can go without restoration within the neighborhoods, because I think one of the worst things you can have in a neighborhood is a construction project that, on day one, everything gets torn up, and then on the final day, everything finally gets put back together. So, this will be kind of a two-pronged phase, so I would just ask for your patience as it relates to that. And maybe one comment just with respect to the data piece. The city has systems. They have a GIS system. They have other systems that they use. I think really our challenge is to, how to use those systems better, so that, just as you talked about with ASBILTS, that repairs that are made in system get logged in system, so that the city knows what's been repaired, and they know how to address it the next time there's an issue, and being able to better communicate that data, and then better plan, use asset management capability or other things, so that when you have a large bond program and a consent decree program going on at the same time, you can look geographically in an area and understand what's going on there, and how do we plan those projects, so that they integrate better, rather than just do one and then have another one come in and tear up where you just were. So, thank you for the opportunity. I hope those further answered. Yes, sir.
Thank you. Several questions, and you can answer them as we go. If I was to say that this consent decree work over the last five years has been one of the most disturbing aspects of city life, I would be understating the level of frustration that has come from our residents, inconvenience throughout the cities, especially the districts that was first targeted for this work. And thank you for your presentation. Your company resume seems to be very impressive. What do you offer us that CDM Smith did not offer us?
Well, you know, I don't know that I would characterize it as, what does one company offer that another doesn't, but what I would tell you is, based on our experience in programs, every program is unique to the community that the program resides in, and there are different issues that are important to that community or that need to be addressed as you build a program. So, the way we look at programs is, we recognize that there's efficiencies that we can transfer program to program, and you want those efficiencies, because you don't want to pay for everything on the backs of your ratepayers. But likewise, we also recognize there's a percentage of a program that needs to be flexible, and it needs to adjust to the needs of the community that's there. So, that's one of the things that we pride ourselves in in developing our programs, is understanding that uniqueness of the community, understanding that uniqueness of the program, and then building the structure of the program to allow that as we go forward. I'll also tell you that, and I don't know that this is a CDM versus Burns &amp; McDonald thing, but I'll also say that we believe that you're much better off strategically planning the project and spending your time and effort getting that project right, rather than spending your time and effort trying to recover from a project that's gone wrong on the back end. And I don't know that you've had that here, but I know that the program is, it looks to me to be very reactive as we go forward, so one of the things that we'll try and do is take away that reactiveness and become more strategic at the front end of these projects and position that way.
Well, you can actually answer the question that you just brought up, and that, we've been in transition period for what, several months now, right?
Yeah. Yeah, not very many months, but yes.
But, I mean, you've had opportunity to observe and to review.
Yes.
What the project is.
Yes, we have, and, yes, sir.
So, I guess my question is, do you see areas that you don't have to reinvent the wheel, or do we take what we are and we can move forward comfortably?
Well, I don't think we're going to reinvent the wheel, but we can, we're definitely going to make changes in the program. And this was really one of the things we talked about, all the way back to the interview process. We said we're really going to challenge staff in this program to make them think. So, areas that we think we can improve the program as we go forward, we know we can have better communication in the program between the program team, the designers, and the contractors. That is apparent in our dealings thus far, in our meetings thus far with design firms. We can better standardize across both design and construction so that those firms know better what their expectation is, and that you don't get duplication or rework associated with moving a concept design from planning to early design to final design and into construction. We're going to, as I mentioned, we're going to look at the Phase Four projects, and rather than bid them all at the same time, we're going to lay that schedule back so that local contractors have a better chance to bid work. I would also recommend, I've not talked about this with staff, but I would also recommend that you note that we put out the information before the first bid on all of the bids that are coming, so that the local contracting community better understands what's going to happen and when it's going to happen, so that they can prepare. We talked a little bit this morning that these programs are so burdensome from a cost standpoint on a community, that if you're not looking for those opportunities to help build local capacity or to keep revenue locally, you're really missing one of the few benefits of the program that, of all the investment that you're making. So, I think those are all things that we can do. I'm sure there, Councilman, I'm sure there are many more that I'm skipping right past, but I hope that's the big ones.
But you're sitting into my next question.
Okay, fantastic.
Because, you know, fair share and local participation is very important to me.
Yes, sir.
To this council as well. We're talking, either one of you guys was a part of the previous project team?
When you say project.
The program management team?
Program management team.
Yes, yes.
So, we were not a member of the previous program management team. However, we were a design consultant under Phase Three and partnered with the program. And so, there's certainly some synergy that's been built already in our exposure from a design consultant standpoint, so.
Okay. And the reason my asking is that there were some minority companies that was a part of subbing for the previous program manager, who I feel was competent in doing their work, trusting that they would have opportunity to continue in that type of work. So, when you mentioned fifty percent of this project you felt would be awarded to fair share clients.
Fifty percent of our contract.
Of your contract?
Right.
Okay. Have you already identified some of the tasks and work that you would be outsourcing to these companies?
We have. We have identified, these companies, these are the companies, plus we're missing one up here.
Sure.
We've identified what tasks they would perform, and the revenues associated with that task for this year's contract only. That would be defined in next year as we negotiate that contract, but the percentage splits of that would be similar. They would be about fifty percent. This is a fifty-fifty target for us. That's not unusual for us. Our program in St. Louis, we partner on over fifty percent of the work. Our program in Jackson, our partners have more than fifty percent of the work as well. We understand that local companies need to have a revenue stream and be able to grow and build from that. So, I would say that I think there's tons of opportunities in the program for those who have been part of the program. It may look a little different than it did in the past. It may not be part of the program manager's contract. It might be a contract, a standalone contract, or it might be a contract with another company. But certainly, our goal is to try as much as possible and get local participation active and involved in building capacity, not just so that they can do work here in Shreveport, but so that they can take what they've learned and go to other communities and grow their business as a result of those revenues flowing in.
And certainly, I agree with that, because if we're going to invest this type of money into this consent decree work, certainly, it should be a building block. It should be able to move, gain the experience and move forward. My final question, sir, from where you are now and your anticipation of seeing this through, is that correct?
I hope so.
Okay. So.
As long as you allow us.
Well, I mean, if you do a good job, I'm sure you'll keep going, but what do you see, how long duration do you see this project before completion, citywide?
Well, I think one of the challenges that you're going to have, and I know it's certainly something that you're going to be talking, or staffs will be visiting with you about, is the duration of the contract, and not our contract, but the consent decree as a whole, right? And one of the challenges you have in consent decree work, and if you think about your three hundred and fifty million dollar, what you thought was the target price of this program, over a twelve-year period, you've already spent more than three hundred and fifty million, and you're not yet forty percent complete, right? So, you have a lot of work flowing into this program, and your consent decree is giving you no relief on schedule. So, I would simply say this, that I think that you probably need to think about the duration of this consent decree, and can you spread that work out over a greater amount of time, so that it's not so burdensome for you to do that. But it's, that's not my place to say. That'll ultimately be, that'll ultimately be something that the city and the regulatory agencies will have to talk about.
We have some people that's going to work with the EPA on that and try to get us the proper time that they feel would accommodate what we're trying to get accomplished there.
Yes, sir.
But I certainly concur with Councilman Nicholson in asking that you would come back at a reasonable time to give us a progress report on where you are.
We would be honored to do so.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Bradford. I'm going to go to Councilman Green. I just wanted to say I appreciate, I think some of my questions were already answered, but you're developing, I guess, a backline process and a, someone going out to the community early, if you're letting, and that would be Mr. Dunn. I mean, our residents deserve and need to know exactly what's going on before it happens, and I've got a lot of calls from my area. As one of them right now, some work is going on, that they were unhappy, because they didn't know, came home from work, and it just, it was tore up over there. So, I appreciate the fact that you all are doing that, and just make sure that we keep that early on in the process. Everything else I had was already answered, so thank you. Councilman Green?
Thank you. I'd just like to say congratulations to you all. I feel very comfortable. I have a request on, for instance, last week, Mr. Gary Norman and I were driving through parts of my district, and in the Hollywood Heights area, they have a street waters, a one waters place, and they're doing consent decree work there, and they tore up the whole street, so they can't, you can't go down either way, you have to go all the way around. I would hope that somewhere or another, I don't know if it's possible or not, that if you're working on a street, that they just won't tear the whole street up, that they will have an in-way out on one side. But this one has been out for a while. Mr. Norman is checking on, seeing when they will be completed, but if all possible, we could, you know, give people an opportunity to be able to get in and out from their residence. That's just one thing that I like.
Yes, sir. Certainly understand.
I would just add that with the application for the issue resolution that we're going to launch, that's exactly the things that we're going to apply. So, you have driveway accessibility, sewer odor, standing water, road hazards, and you'll be able, as a constituent, as well as city council, myself, you all can go to the website, and actually, it will slow down y'all's email traffic, and you'll be able to get to the issue out to us a lot quickly. And that's something that's not implemented. If you go to the city's reports website right now, it's integrated within the full system. There's just a lot of options that can be confusing. This would be a simple, I mean, eighty to ninety percent of the traffic is on a mobile device, so they'll be able to get there, and they'll get out, and we'll be able to get someone on it a lot sooner.
Thank you. So, let me ask, let me follow up, if you please, Councilman. So, what methods are you planning on using to communicate with the public?
So, definitely, old-school ways, going to be interfacing face-to-face, going into the neighborhoods, door hangers, mailouts as well, community meetings. You guys have been on a spree of town hall meetings. We can come in on those as well. We'll also restructure the website. That way, it can be more user-friendly, again, from a mobile, so you can start an issue or get a request from there. We'll still take in the email traffics, and of course, the calls from the hotline. But everything that I just told you will be centralized into one location. That way, it won't be hard for us to get to the resolution.
So, issue like Councilman Green just mentioned, inconveniencing a neighborhood that will be communicated to and give us some type of?
Yeah, so, with the chief technology officer, Keith Hanson, they have twenty-two thousand subscriptions for the 411 system. We'll be able to roll out information for road hazards and roadblocks through that system, as well as contact the media, as well as launch a social media presence. If you look right now, Clean Water Shreveport does not have a social media presence at all, and you guys know how many people are coming on Facebook these days. We'll actually, we'll be able to say correspondence in that way as well.
Okay. That's good, because again, a lot of, a lot of our residents in some of our districts are not social media savvy, so we're going to need some old-fashioned.
We got your back. We got your back, Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Councilman Bradford. Councilman Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. Now, I know we covered a whole lot earlier in the infrastructure meeting, but I'd like to cover some of the stuff for everyone here and the folks at home right now. Tell everybody what you told me about minority participation earlier.
Related to our contract, what I had said previously was simply that we expect over fifty percent of this project to be fair share participants here in Shreveport.
But with your subcontractors as well?
Correct. Yes, our contract and our subcontract, yes.
What do you all think the project management fee will end up being for twelve months?
For twelve months, it's, we looked at that a lot when we developed the fee, and one of the things that we tried to do was annualize that fee, so that the city had a good feel. And we targeted about ten million dollars annually for that. Now, the one caveat I'll say to that ten million dollars that I think you'll want to think about as we go forward, and we'll certainly talk about this in the fall, is you were doing about a ten million dollar annual fee with your previous program manager. You didn't have a lot of the data management components that I think you probably need in a program like this as part of that. So, we might look at how can we move some work out of the program contract to local design firms or other local contractors and pick that component up. But we certainly understand the sensitivity to the program manager's fee, and our goal is going to try and keep the, to keep the fee at or about where you've been used to the fee in previous years.
And that's something that you'll be able to do within the scope of the project without having to go out for bid for those things.
Correct.
All right. So, that's another opportunity for you to, okay, that's cool. That's what I needed to hear. All right.
Is that it, Councilwoman?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Mayor Perkins?
Yeah, I'd just like to commend Burns &amp; McDonnell for the exceptional technical expertise that they've already showcased and bring into the table and just working here over the last couple of months. I came in our office, and I heard very similar stories, as Councilman Nicholson and the Councilman Bradford pointed out, about some of the issues that we had with the previous project manager, and it was my charge to make sure that we got this right. So, I'm very confident that we'll get this right with the new leadership over our project, with the project management team. Also, the strong local presence that you have, I really want to commend you about that. We appreciate that as well, how well you've worked with stakeholders. You already talked about working with Downtown Development Authority. You've worked with our staff extremely well. You already have a plan to work with our citizens, the city's most valuable asset, and I'm appreciative of that. And lastly, I'd say something that's outside the scope of the contract that I've charged you with, and no offense to you, Burns &amp; McDonnell and Bonton, but it's building local capacity, so that one day, we can have our own engineering firm that can do this type of work, and we won't have to go outside of Shreveport. And your investment into the future of this city with these interns is a pretty clear sign that you, you're already getting that done. So, I just, I just want to thank you for that, so that's all I have.
Thank you, Mayor Perkins. May I take this opportunity to have our staff stand or our team stand, and then we're going to send them back to work, if that's okay with you?
Okay.
Guys, would you stand up and be recognized?
Whoa!
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Merci. Faces change on that staff as we ramp this program up, but we've already got a good amount of staff here, and we already have a good amount of local staff, so we're looking forward to a successful program.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, one thing that people don't realize is that them engaging the community actually helps city operations. When the project manager isn't answering calls and have a website that actually gets funneled to the city's water and sewer department. So, a lot of the gripes that we get, not just about the billing of the city, but also we get a lot of gripes about torn up roads, et cetera, that clearly, they have a plan to help us, so our system's not as inundated, and we can deliver a better service from a city standpoint, so.
Thank you. Any other questions?
That's it from the council, I believe.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
And Chairman, my last note, we have Mr. Ken Epperson, former Cato Commissioner in the audience, and the former lead for Veteran Affairs in Northern Louisiana here. Mr. Epperson, you want to say anything?
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, everyone. The Mayor Perkins, Council Lady Fuller, Chairman Bowman, gentlemen of the council. I'm Kenneth R. Epperson, Senior, Chairman of the Veterans Celebration Committee. Mayor Perkins had given me a charge upon last week. Many of you may have heard that we celebrated the one-hundred-year birthday of Colonel Steve DePysler. He's a gentleman that served thirty-eight years in the military. He had every rank from private E-one up to Colonel in the officer's rank. He still volunteers now at the age of one hundred, from nine until three each day at the Buxdale Air Force Retiree Center. He drives, he's married for seventy-four years, he and his wife Gloria. They have three children, a phenomenal individual. Anything that has been done to recognize our veterans in the military, Colonel DePysler has a hand in it, from West Point to the Naval Academy to Baton Rouge, and all of the things that you see around here recognizing our veterans and our military. So, Mayor, I present the proclamation in your absence. You are recognized as a United States Army Captain and a combat veteran, and we certainly appreciate that, and thank you for your services. Also, the Veterans Celebration Committee, in order of honoring this legacy, on November the ninth at five o'clock PM at the Boja Civic Center, in addition to recognizing eleven veterans for their military and community service, will be initiating the first annual Stephen Colonel D. DePysler Award. It will be given to an individual person, a military organization, a business organization, or a group of individuals for their service in reference to our community locally, veterans, military, also on a national basis. So, we'd like to invite you all to that. Thank you very much, and I have some information, Mayor, I'd like to share with you and the council, whereas you may participate in other things that we have going on throughout the year. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Epperson. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my remarks.
All right. I had a Stefan Jones, but I don't see him, so.
Oh. I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman, while he's coming, we'd like to recognize former Councilmember Roy Carey that's in the back.
Hello, Mr. Carey.
How you doing, Mr. Carey?
I had, sure, go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman Bowman, Vice Chair Nicholson, Mayor Perkins. Stefan Jones, resident of Cedar Grove, seven-three-two-one Wingate, standing in some concern to Resolution Ninety-Two with the state of emergency for Cedar Grove community, and not just Cedar Grove, but District F. I'm concerned primarily because it seems to, I was caught off guard by the fact that that was even taken to that level, being that with me being the Vice President of the Cedar Grove Neighborhood Association, we haven't had a community meeting, to my knowledge, discussing, taking these type of measures. I believe the citizens would like to have an opportunity to have a discussion with not just Councilman Green, but all four of the councilmen who cover Cedar Grove and other areas, just to be able to talk about these things. As far as I knew, we were trying to work as a community to get Cedar Grove back where it was, and just a month ago, we had an outstanding festival that was bringing back a unifying effort for all of us to clean up our community, not just for the eyes to see, but to heal as a community, where we can become neighbors again. And it just kind of hurts me to see that it's perceived that our community is a war zone to declare a state of emergency. In fact, it became embarrassing. As I was on Facebook this morning, someone said we should just... we should just build a wall, and someone quoted, or excuse me, re- replied to that comment by saying, "We already have a wall, it's I-49, we call it the Great Wall of Streetport." That's a problem, because we who live on the west side of I-49 feel that that's exactly how some of our city leaders feel about our side of town. There's no reason why the western corridor should not look like the eastern corridor. Uh, when I was younger, I could go to Olive Garden on Mansfield Road, that's no longer the case, and it seems like everything is being pushed away from the community that we're trying to build, and I understand east side of Cedar Grove doesn't have this problem because they're on the east side of I-49, that's also an area that I believe that's being targeted for gentrification. So, everything on the west side of I-49 is not a war zone. In fact, we love our community, we're trying to keep it clean. Have these conversations with us first before I get a call from the Streetport Times asking, "Have I even heard about a state of emergency being declared in my community?" Uh, I find that offensive, because if I can go out and vote, and, uh, you're a great guy, Pastor Green, I understand what you're doing, if I can go out and vote and ask other people to vote for you all, at least have a conversation with me and say, "Hey, let's have a meeting about this, what do you all think we should be doing with, with this community?", because as far as I understand, there's no huge outcry from the citizens, unless I just haven't been aware, but again, we have community meetings every month, and no one has talked about things being going, or things having to be elevated to this level. Now, what we have discussed, uh, and Mr. Versa Clark is here, and I believe he can give you more detail on that, we have, uh, given communications to some of you all about possibly having substations, which I believe may be a part of the proposal for the bond issue coming up. That's something we would love to do in Cedar Grove, but before you send officers to Cedar Grove, they need to be willing to stay there, they need to be willing to become a part of the Cedar Grove community, not live somewhere else and come work in Cedar Grove. We want some folks who don't mind living in Cedar Grove, who wouldn't mind getting to know the neighbors, getting to know people in the community, because we may know them as what seems to be the neighborhood drunk, but they may have a mental health issue that needs to be covered, and if we get people who are just coming in, making a check, and not invested in Cedar Grove or District F as a whole, then we're really just spinning wheels, we're not trying to solve an issue, and, um, I'm a young man, I have a choice to leave Cedar Grove, but also I have a choice to stay, and I made the choice to stay in the community that I grew up in, and I feel that if we can work together, so let's sit down and have these discussions with the same people who voted you in, then we can come bring this to the table and bring, bring forth a plan that doesn't seem, uh, so drastic. When you, when I hear state of emergency, I think about the National Guard coming in, and that, to me, it, it stirs up fear, where there may not have been fear before, you know, uh, yeah, I heard gunshots last week, I'll be honest, when a young man was killed on West Seventy-Fifth while I'm out trying to lose some weight and get my summer body together, Councilman Bowman, I hear gunshots. That is disturbing, okay, but I also understand that one of my coaching buddies was killed over a parking lot dispute in Anderson Island, so it's not just about, well, let's go ramp up security in Cedar Grove or policing in Cedar Grove, how about we find ways to create economic development in this community, so these people have jobs they can go to, they have opportunities that they can go to, let's, let's clean that up, that's, we're interested in that, we're interested in our citizens being, uh, being educated on what's going on with these opportunities zones, uh, we, we're, we're interested in those type of things. We have folks in Cedar Grove who don't even know that where they live has been rezoned for commercial property, so if their house burns down, they can't rebuild it, so that's how gentrification takes place, and we're not interested in that. Now, I'm not in any way trying to make this a white or black issue, what I am trying to make this is, is we're forgetting the poor, and I'm a Christian man, I wanna be amongst the sheep and not the goats, I wanna be able to make sure that we take care of the least of these, and not just those who are will-to-do. So, let's not stir up any type of unnecessary fear within the community, uh, because now we've got folks going, "Well, well, what's going on, or, or is the state troops coming in, or National Guard coming in?", and I really don't know, because I didn't know the community was that bad. I honestly did not, and I felt like if we were in that type of, uh, condition, then, then those measures would have already been taken, but there's no need to stir up that kind of fear. Listen, let's talk about these things, y'all, before we get, um, these kinda issues out there, we, we have comments like, "We, we got the Great Wall of Streetport." Instead of this becoming an issue that Cedar Grove could have taken care of, and Moretown and all of District F, and, and I, and I wanna, and I say Cedar Grove because I don't wanna limit it to District F, because part of District F neighbors the east side of Cedar Grove, and the truth of the matter is, we, we're just Cedar Grove. This Saturday, we got an East versus West basketball game, that's one of our biggest community events, everybody's gonna come out there, flood the streets, I invite you all to come, because it's a real big deal, all right? There's no way, if we're under a state of emergency, that we can have an event that we've been doing for the past eight years, if it's as bad as it's being perceived. Now, if, if, if I'm getting something wrong, please help me understand, but, um, I just want more clarity, because as I was asked, "Have we had any town hall meetings about this?", no, we have not, to my knowledge, and if we have, the word didn't get out well enough from Cedar Grove, which is often felt neglected, and I'm not blaming this on you, have, we've often felt neglected when it comes to District F, because we feel like whoever wants that district, they only need Moretown, and they're in, nobody even campaigns over there hard, because it's just like, "Hey, forget about west side of Cedar Grove." Well, no, don't forget about us, we wanna be better, we're trying to be better, we need you all to listen to what we have to say. So, I'm asking you all to please have a conversation with us, we meet the first Tuesday of every month at six o'clock. If you can't make that meeting, y'all get with me, I will call a special meeting as Vice President, get with Ms. Orrhart, we'll call a special meeting, where you all can come in and, and have a conversation with us, so we can clean up these issues, because Cedar Grove is almost a hundred years old, and we're going to make sure that by the time we make a hundred years old, it's gonna be a beautiful celebration, everybody's gonna be a part of it, it's gonna be our community, this is my heritage, this is where I grew up, it's where I met my wife, and I'm gonna fight for it, I'm gonna stand for it, so I need y'all to work with me, 'cause I don't wanna become combative and feel like I'm not trying to work with you all. Amen? Thank you.
Thank you. First of all, Pastor Reverend Jones, I appreciate you coming, and of course, uh, I thought you knew me well enough that you could pick up the phone and call me. On the next thing is, social media has given you my plan, I have not, I plan to do it today. Everything that you covered, I have it in this plan, communicating with the community, calling meetings, the mayor has given me a person to do everything that we need to do as a people, but before we get to point Z, I started with point A, because I've talked to the people for six months. On social media, I don't, you have not heard from me on social media, in fact, yesterday, the media wanted to talk to me about the plan. I said to them I could not talk to them, because before I put A before B, I wanna make sure that we up here agree to this resolution. I don't know how they made it so that I was calling in the National Guard, I ain't trying to scare nobody, but I do have a plan, I talked to Chief Ben Raymond, he has a part of it, also have a Mr. Patrick White here today, he has a part of it, I do have the whole plan here. Now, I can't deal with social media because I'm old, and I do not do that, but I do know how to write and put it on paper, and then I would appreciate that, that before people jump to the gun to say what I'm doing or not doing, anytime Ms. Hart has called me, I've been to Cedar Grove, I've been there with Councilman Butch, I've been there with Councilman Nicholson, we've been there, Councilman Fuller, we've been there, you have not called me, but if you call me, I will show, I don't wanna come back, I'm gonna give my plan today, so whatever you heard on social media, you heard that, but the next time, I would appreciate it if you would call Pastor Jones, I talk to him and say, "Would you call Pastor Green to see what's going on?", versus coming up here in public saying, "We don't know it", the National Guard and whatever. I have a plan, it ain't scaring people, like I said, the mayor has a sign, I got a list of, uh, communications here for pastors, for people, in fact, I'll just tell you a part of it, so that you'll understand, it's three, it's a three-pronged deal, it's people, police, and pastors. It ain't just something that you're gonna call the police in, and they're gonna be up and down the street, and they're gonna be doing this, it's a whole plan, it also involves economic development. In Moretown, in District F, they have not built a house, we don't have a store, we don't have any, I plan to get with Ms. Bunny, more of them, and I'm going before, just so that you'll understand, that this ain't just the police coming to your neighborhood, this is about the whole person. I've talked to people, and they've asked me, "How can we get from point A to point B?", I have a plan for the whole person, I'm gonna go from one side of my district to the other to meet with the citizens, as I did when I was running, I'm gonna have community meetings, uh, it all, it all, I have it all in one piece, so I'm not trying to put any fear, I just happen to be the person that I was elected, and I hope you voted for me, and I hope you vote for me again.
I've always supported you.
All right, so, I promise you that this will be a model, I talked to the mayor about it, we've had great conversations about it, I've talked to the chief about it, I promise you, it will be a model for this entire city. I talked to Councilman Flurry yesterday, I said to him that I was gonna use it as a model, that I couldn't talk to the press until, we, there's seven of us up here, and before we can get anything done, we gotta have four votes, so therefore, I could not talk to the media before I get at least four votes, I mean, hope that everybody will vote for them, in hopes, even during the time before I was elected, I talked to Councilman Butch, I said, "I got a plan for the city." I talked to Councilman Nicholson, I talked to, uh, Councilman Fuller and Flurry, that I had a plan for the city, a model, it's just taking some time to get it, so it's not something, you know, I've heard people call me and say, "Why didn't you do it for the whole city?", I'm not, I was not elected for the whole city, I was elected for District F, but this plan here is to encompass the entire city, and if you give me the opportunity to explain it, I will.
If I may, sir?
I'm not, I'm not debating, I just, I'm just saying, give me the opportunity to plan instead of letting social media and people in the audience that possibly, you know, have a negative attitude, whether, I, I, I was telling my church son, let me just tell you that, people don't mind you doing stuff, sometimes they just don't like that it's you, okay? You know, people, you know, they have certain people that if certain people do it, they just clap, you know, you deal with church, so, you know, people, they, they say, "Okay, you're doing a good job, we just hate it's you." You know? You know, we'll work with somebody else, you know, so, and then, there are other people that you can have in your circle, you have to put 'em out, it's okay to miss 'em, but just put 'em out of your circle, you just don't deal with. My grandmama said, "You say good morning to 'em and feed 'em with a long hound spoon." Here again, I promise you, give me the opportunity, this is not something that I just came up with yesterday, but to put this on the table is exactly what you said, a conversation piece, just to get people involved, but it's not like I've gone and just dreamed this up, I've talked to each one of these individuals, in fact, let me just tell you the whole story, I said to them, "If in fact, since we brought it to the table, let me just tell you what I said to them, and I wouldn't lie in front of them, I said, 'I would like to be the chairman, I have a piece that I would like to bring to the council, and if I'm chairman, I'd like to just put it forward.'" Now, they are here, they can tell you if I'm lying or not, so this ain't just something that I thought of yesterday and just say, "Let's throw this out there", I'm not trying to scare you, it's a whole piece, so, I know you being a man of God, you'll understand to give me an opportunity to at least tell my side of it.
And you will talk sometime.
And I will tell my side today.
Can I, just for clarity, um, I, I, I have not accused you of not being visible in Cedar Grove, in fact, you were one of the people who were there in our council.
I'm just talking about Stefan, just to tell my side of this.
Yes, sir, all I, all, all I'm saying, as a citizen, perception becomes reality. When I'm looking at not, not just social media, but KSLA, which I would think would be a credible news source in our city, and I'm reading a story by them, or from Kill Radio, and I haven't yet heard this conversation or had a community meeting with my councilman, and it seems as if he's going to the council to ask for this, and we haven't had these communications with him, that's, that's what I'm saying, and it seems just, okay, I'd have, I would have much rather have heard something on the front end before we got into the media where it seems to be taken all different sorts of ways, and had I had that clarity before today, I wouldn't be standing today, and I want you to know, Councilman Green, I want you to know, I'm a great supporter of yours, I'm a great supporter of yours, okay? I'm a great supporter of yours, in fact, when it came time for election season last year, and I saw you in line, I did not qualify.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's how much respect I have for you, so let's, let's make that clear, okay? So, I felt like an honorable man was running, no need for me to qualify and split the pie, okay? So, you have my support in that regard, all I'm asking, and I think other citizens are asking, is that we be included before things seem to spin out of control, and I'm not saying, you never said the words, "I'm bringing in the National Guard", but when citizens hear state of emergency, the perception is.
Well, let's let him come up with it, and, and come up with his plan.
My last point.
And I'd be fair enough to do that, to allow you to present your plan.
Social media is here, uh, Gary, you're an honest person, will y'all not do this to me again, cousin? I didn't call y'all and tell y'all to do it, let them know that I didn't tell y'all. You wanted to talk to me yesterday, I said I couldn't talk, didn't I do that? I didn't, I didn't tell y'all to put it on TV, so...
Counselor's gonna address it at a proper time, I think.
So, I didn't tell them, I didn't talk to Kill, I didn't talk to nobody, so ask them, they're right there.
Hey, I, all I'm saying, perception is certainly reality for many of us, I saw, I saw it, and I didn't just see it, I, I get a call from the Streetport Times, I guess because of my position with the Neighborhood Association, they've never called me before, and so, "Hey, have you heard about it, have you heard about the state of emergency?", you know, the citizens asking him for this, this, that, and the third, all I'm saying is, for all of us, let's have these conversations with the citizens before things like this can be taken out of context. Now that you and I have had that conversation, you know, here, I, I understand that there, there's more to it, okay, but at the end of the day, uh, and I'll be sure to make sure I give you a phone call, um, but when I'm hearing this, I just want to come speak and, and make that clear, not just, and I want you to feel like I'm challenging you, I need the city of Streetport to know that Cedar Grove is not as bad off as people think it is, and we are much stronger than people think we are, that's why I'm standing here today to let you know that it's not what it seems to be in the media.
All right, thank, thank you, Mr. Jones.
Thank you all.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Green, anyone have anything for property standards for Mr. Green today? Councilwoman Fuller? No. All right, before you make your way on down, Mr. Green, we appreciate your service, okay? All right. Uh, Mr. Clark, do we have anything for Mr. Clark today? Anyone have anything for Mr. Clark? Did you have someone wanting to present, Mr. Clark? Please go.
Good afternoon, uh, just real briefly, uh, since I've been listening to all the, the planning that's going on, the Master Plan Committee, uh, will have its meeting in August, and one of the things that the Master Plan Committee will start initiating is that the master plan was adopted in twenty-ten, and since twenty-ten, we have been working through the master plan, the most important document that we've been utilizing has been the Unified Development Code, but it's not perfect by no stretch of the imagination, it's been an evolving, a fluid, uh, document, but we, it is time to update the master plan. The chair has asked us to do an evaluation of all of the, uh, proposals of the master plans, the directions of the master plan, and show where they are, that's a very involved process, but, uh, we will start that process in August, and at some point, with representatives from the council, and the commission, and the MPC Board, we will be trying to start the process of updating the master plan and doing the evaluation of the documents.
Thank you, sir. Councilwoman Fuller?
Thank you, Chair. Mr. Clark, I just wanted to say thank you for coming to the Stoner Hill meeting with me a couple weeks ago.
Yes, ma'am.
I look forward to taking you to more meetings, we're gonna have so much fun.
Well, you know, we, 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 I was not going to allude to the fact that we have... this way leaders and other employees will be able to observe this area, area more readily. Um, of course, bottle security caps will be used to secure this alcohol, uh, to further deter, uh, theft of goods. Uh, but I just want to briefly talk about what Brookshire does for the community, and I know it feels like a lot of negative stuff, but I just want to talk about some positive things that Brookshire does for the community. So we take twenty-five World War II veterans every year to Washington DC from the Shreveport area, and they have an opportunity to visit the Washington monuments, Lincoln, FDR, Korean War, and the Smithsonian. Uh, we cap it off with a lunch at the Capitol, and it's truly an exceptional experience, and I tell you, there's not a dry eye in the room, uh, and it's true, and truly an honor, uh, for the citizens of Shreveport. Also, something Brookshire does is, uh, do I have any runners on the council today? Not running for political office, but.
Not unless someone's chasing.
If that question was intended to shame us, you've done a good job, Mr. Stevenson.
So, we put on the heroes run, and this is our fourth annual year for the heroes run, which will be October the twenty-sixth, uh, it's a fifteen K, five K run, and what we would like to do is make this the largest race in northern Louisiana, each year has grown, um, and, and the good thing about it is, guys, see, all the proceeds are reallocated back into the city. Uh, so, in two thousand sixteen, we were able to gain forty-six thousand dollars, and that was reallocated to the city. Two thousand seventeen, fifty-six thousand, and then in two thousand eighteen, seventy thousand dollars, and, and this money is shared, uh, with the Shreveport Police Department, the Fire Department, and other municipalities, uh, and it's split between Shreveport and Bossier. Um, also, we're seventeen thousand dollars sponsored for the Shreveport Mudbook Hockey Team, I hope that you all have been able to attend one of these, uh, games, it's rather frigid, but it makes for a great date night, uh, but we believe that this is definitely a K-Pod, and I like to call it an acronym for a key point of difference that differs us from some of our neighboring cities. Uh, also.
Mr. Stevenson, I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you because your time is up, but let me just say, uh, how much I appreciate everything Brookshire does for the community, and in addition to the things that you've identified, you also employ, uh, many disabled individuals, uh, give them very meaningful work, and I, uh, I'm thankful for that, and I'm also thankful for the fact that you, you feed me and my wife and four kids on a regular basis. It's, it's, it's good to see you, and thank you so much for coming.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mr. Tracy Toops.
Hello, I'm Tracy Toops, uh, four-two-four Braemar Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, second generation owner of Thrifty Discount Liquor and Wine Company, uh, co-owner and operator. Uh, the separate entrances deter underage purchase attempts, the possibility of a minor from entering the building with intent to shoplift, and deters underage drinking. The separate entrances make it easier for law enforcement to recognize and isolate these particular problems. Minors or children will be exposed to intoxicated adults. We, as a company, spend time, money, energy training our employees not to sell merchandise to intoxicated individuals. However, we cannot prevent that individual from walking into our stores. It is on a frequent basis that we turn down individuals that are intoxicated, and I assure you that those are some of the most difficult transactions to complete. It is not a pretty picture, especially for a, potentially for a minor to experience. When a grown adult is screaming mad because they cannot get what they want at the moment. Teens that may try to steal hard liquor items such as a two-hundred milliliter, three-seven-five milliliter, seven-fifty milliliter package that can easily be put into a pant pocket. We don't have a beer or wine theft, theft issue. We do have a hard liquor issue, theft, uh, hard liquor theft issue, and there is a big difference if I'm, if a minor were to consume the whole package when it could lead to serious harm and/or potentially death. With the exception of a few stores, uh, in town, customarily, uh, in regards to big-box stores, they ignore shoplifting, uh, to avoid any conflict. We prevent shoplifting proactively. Uh, also, marketing-themed displays, remember that hard liquor wholesalers have no skin in the game regarding who's, who the store sells to, so it could potentially be beneficial for distributors to market to future customers. For example, these are some of the flavored vodka's that have been presented to us by distributors, cotton candy, fruit punch, orange drink, pink lemonade, and watermelon, not to mention other flavored rum, whiskeys, and brandies. I don't know about you, but I do not want my children asking me about trying that liquid with a picture of cotton candy on the label, which is exactly why we need separate entrances. Eighteen-year-olds or younger that look like fully grown adults, that individual that has been growing a beard for the last month and weighs two-hundred-and-twenty-five pounds, we have seen him, they try to come along every summer, as our staff is trained to screen for these potential problems. I've got a picture of a, uh, fake ID that we turned in to the police last week that I can, uh, share with you all. We, a grocery store, will a grocery store, or a dollar store actually be able to screen these individuals properly in between stocking, paper towels, and looking for batteries? It is very difficult, timely, and expensive to train employees properly to check for identification, especially when there are other functions that individual is trying to perform. Our policy is to let go of any employee that is cited or discovered for selling to a minor.
Mr. Toops, I hate to interrupt you, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna stop you because your time is expired, but we appreciate your perspective, and certainly we'll consider it.
Okay. Any questions?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Ron LePo. Mr. LePo, you here?
No.
Mr. Tom Arsenault.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Tom Arsenault, three-thirty-three Texas Street, Suite seven-hundred, Shreveport, Louisiana, seven-one-zero-one. I'm here to talk to you briefly, and I will be brief, about, uh, ordinance number eighty-one of two thousand nineteen, yesterday. Um, I sensed that you might have a longer meeting, so I decided to put some of my thoughts in writing, and I, I emailed you a letter, uh, earlier today that kind of sets forth the, the thoughts. When the UDC was passed, as Mr. Clark said earlier, um, we could have waited until we thought it, we had it perfect, and it wouldn't have been perfect, uh, but instead, the UDC was passed with the understanding that there would be circumstances that would arise, that it makes, that made sense to make some text amendments, to omit, uh, to, uh, deal with , uh, omissions and errors. Uh, the second part of your ordinance number eighty-one deals with one of those, it has to do with grandfathered billboards. And, uh, so, your alternative is you can have somebody build a billboard, take it down, and then trade it for another billboard, or you can let that happen with a surrender of an existing permit, and let somebody go forward and build the, the billboard which will be subject to the UDC, uh, differently. If you take a look, I know that, uh, that you had been cited to, uh, section sixteen-point-one-A, I quoted it, I want to read you the second sentence of sixteen-point-one-A. "This process for amending the code is intended to allow modifications in response to omissions or errors." That's one of the reasons, because we knew that with this three-hundred-page ordinance, that there were gonna be things, and they have been, there have been dozens of amendments to the UDC, many of them that came up as a result of particular landowners, but because of the circumstances of those owners. What you have here is a small class of people that you can benefit efficiently to accomplish something that brings billboards in compliance with the UDC, or you can choose to, uh, I think, be ultra-conservative in your view of this third sentence of section sixteen-point-one-A, and require people to build something, tear it down, and then build it again in another location. It seems to me that it makes more sense to do it the easier, more efficient, more competitive way, and we certainly appreciate your attention, and I ask that you please, uh, vote for ordinance eighty-one, as it's presented by the MPC, passed unanimously. We're glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Arsenault, I just want to call back to you what you told us and what you said in our letter to make sure that I understand. This, uh, ordinance that the MPC has unanimously recommended to us, uh, it, it's not intended to help particular people, but it, it does, as you said in your letter, deal with a very small class of just three permits.
That's correct. It does.
And, and if we, if we don't pass the ordinance that the MPC has presented, we would make those permit holders build billboards and then tear them down, and if they did that, they would have the right to put a new billboard up somewhere else.
That's correct. Or, or they could build, or they could build, they could build the billboard and keep it there, but it wouldn't have to comply with the new regulations of the UDC.
So, so really, all we're doing is just letting three permit holders, uh, skip the sensible step of tearing down billboards to put them somewhere else if they choose to.
Yes, sir, but it's a class of people, happens to be a small class, but it, it, it is something that's determined not for the benefit of a single party.
Thank you, sir.
Tom, I, I didn't quite hear, uh, you, you in support of this?
Yes, sir, I'm support of the, I, I'm speaking, I represent Digivision, which is one of, they have two permits, uh, and I represent Digivision, and they are supportive of what the U, MPC unanimously passed, Mr. Fleury, thank you very much.
Mr. Lester Smith.
Mr. Lester Smith. Lester? Lester Smith, yes, sir. I'm sorry, L-E-S-T-E-R.
That's me, that's me, oh, that's me, that's me. Um, Lester Smith, forty-one, forty-eight, Theo Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Chair and Vice Chair, members. I'm here to speak, um, I wanted to speak on the issue with my councilman, but like, uh, we can get together and talk about that at another time, because I'm doing something with the Police Department, and it's working, uh, as police is in the community, as ambassadors, uh, in the community, a more visible police present in the community, but we, we want to, you know, target areas and try to work to enhance the relationship between the Police Department and the community. And, uh, uh, we, we did a softball game, as a matter of fact, a week ago today, it was a great, we had a great, great turnout, we, we had a lot of fun out there, and we got a lot of complaints, uh, about the field that I had, I was gonna get with you on, uh, Councilman, because people want Airport Park open back up. They, uh, young lady was telling me about kickball, that's one of the things the spa director tried to get us to do, and we talked about police and the community, and the preachers playing softball, they wanted to, you know, say, do kickball, but we didn't know anything about kickball, the rules, or how to play it, anything, so we settled for the softball game, but we do want to get those fields up and running, the lights, and get the infield cut, softball fields should be, you know, dirt infield. And, we had a good time, and I just want to say that we, we, we gotta look for ways, and we have to work together, we all have to work together in this thing, we gotta look for ways to deal with issues in the community, but I, I, I do believe we need community input, uh, the news media called me yesterday, I did an interview yesterday, as it pertains to the crime in Moretown. So, and I was gonna do the interview at the shop, at the site where the last homicide was committed, I meant, I had the newsman to meet me there, but I decided, I said, no, let's go into the lion's den, let's go with the so-called, you say, create these obstacles and these problems, let's go talk to them. You don't have to interview me, interview them, because they, who better to tell you their story than them? So he did an interview with some of the guys, and they're crying out for jobs, and so, we, we, and, and, and I know we don't like to talk about it, or it's, make people look like they're not doing their job, but I, I, I feel that we could put, if we could create and produce opportunities for the people that are out there, that we say, other, the thugs, the, whatever you want to call them, I call them peoples living in my community, if we could create some opportunities for these people, I do think that crime would go down. And, uh, I got twenty-two seconds, I'd like to bring the chief up so that he can elaborate on our softball game, if that's, if that, if that's okay, have him.
Can we, can we do it, can we do it later? Do we have some speakers for the benefit of our speakers? I was gonna ask him about that during, during, uh, my follow comments, if that's okay.
It's fine with me, Councilman.
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Roy Carey.
Mayor Perkins, council members, council lady, good evening. I'm glad I was here today because, uh, I got a chance to hear about the new people that are gonna be doing the work in our community with the consent decree. Of course, some of you probably got a letter from me, uh, in reference to the contractors and the work they done, and were doing in our community in some areas. Uh, first of all, I talked to Councilman Bradford, I think, about six months ago, about our church, Mount Cana Baptist Church, and, uh, work that was done over there, how they left the streets, all tore up, and that was a problem. Uh, a few weeks ago, I went to a piece of property that I own on Lilian Street, the contractor, and I sent all of you a picture of it, I sent the mayor a copy, and as a matter of fact, uh, Ms. Ferguson's department, uh, responded back to me, here's the response that they had. It says, "Stores and stockpiling dirt and concrete spores on private property at thirty-six-hundred Lilian without the owner's permission. See attached photos. Spores need to be removed, and contractor needs to provide the city with written document signed by the property owner that their property has been restored to their satisfaction, and no other action is required. Written permission should have been, I'm sorry, written permission should have been obtained by the contractor prior to the use of the property per the city's, uh, Shreveport specification section one-oh-six-point-nine. Storage of material which used, which may be used for storage purposes, for the placement of the contractor's plant equipment, but any additional space required therefore must be provided by the contractor at no additional cost to the city. Private property shall not be used for storage purposes without written permission by the owner or leasing, uh, permission. All storage shall be restored to their original condition, to the satisfaction of the property owner or the leasing, uh, by the contractor at no additional cost to the city." Uh, I heard the gentleman speak earlier about how they were gonna communicate to the public about, uh, when they're doing work in the community, I think that's great, uh, but I know I've been on the city council, a lot of time contractors make promises, and after they get the work, uh, it's a whole different story. Uh, I'm glad, Mr. Bradford, and I heard you, Councilman Nicholson, I think, talk to them about accountability. Uh, I'm sure hoping that this company will do that before they start in the community, that they will let the neighborhood know, and before they use your property without your permission. Uh, I, I've compared some situations in Broadmoor area when they were doing work compared to Queensborough, and I talked to a constituent who was in, uh, North Shreveport, uh, the contractor went in and tore up their yard, the lady was at stage four cancer, uh, was wheelchair-driven, and they couldn't even get to their house. Uh, I sent you pictures to my property, just took, they just piled dirt up, piled pipes up, put the heavy equipment on my property, number was on the window, they didn't call me, they didn't ask me. This contractor was Mr. Pulli, I called him with, uh, I'm sorry, Pulli Contract-
signed by the property owner that their property has been restored to their satisfaction and no other action is required. Written permission should have been, I'm sorry, written permission should have been obtained by the contractor prior to the use of the property per the city's, according to specification Section 106.9. Storage of material which used, which may be used for storage purposes, for the placing of the contractor's plant equipment, but any additional space required therefore must be provided by the contractor at no additional cost to the city. Private property shall not be used for storage purposes without written permission by the owner or leasing permission. All storage shall be restored to their original condition to the satisfaction of the property owner or the leasing by the contractor at no additional cost to the city." I heard the gentleman speak earlier about how they were going to communicate to the public about when they're doing work in the community. I think that's great, but I know I've been on the City Council, a lot of time contractors make promises, and after they get the work, it's a whole different story. I'm glad Mr. Bradford and I heard you, Councilman Nicholson, I think, talk to them about accountability. I'm sure hoping that this company will do that before they start in the community, that they will let the neighborhood know, and before they use your property without your permission. I've compared some situations in Broadmoor area when they were doing work compared to Queensborough, and I talked to a constituent who was in North Shreveport. The contractor went in and tore up their yard, the lady was at stage four cancer, was wheelchair-driven, and they couldn't even get to their house. I sent you pictures to my property, just took, they just piled dirt up, piled pipes up, put the heavy equipment on my property, number was on the window, they didn't call me, they didn't ask me. This contractor was Mr. Pullley. I called him with, I'm sorry, Pullley Contractors.
Okay, that's, that's your time, we pretty much.
Let me, let me, let me ask, let me ask, Mr. Carey a question or two. The property on Ford Street, I know they.
Yes.
They, they, you said without your permission.
They, they did.
But there was communications afterwards, is that right?
Yes, sir. We made contact with the contractor upon them discussing with us the terms, we were able to negotiate a deal for them to pay for the use of our property on Ford Street. But they, before, they just put all of their equipment on there.
Yeah.
And we had to track them down to find out who was doing it, was it the city, was it the Water Department, and I think eventually you told me it was an outside contractor. But we got with that contractor. He did, and has had made good faith and negotiated an lease agreement because we allowed them to use that property.
In regards to the, to the.
The property on 3600 Lilian, this is another contractor, it's Pullley Construction. Mr. Thomas, I sent him an email, I sent him about three emails, I called him personally and talked to him. After talking to him, he said, send him some pictures. I sent him pictures, he has not responded. I've left emails, I've called, I've texted, I've tried to make every effort to contact him, and he's just been uncooperative, and I don't know whether he's.
So how long have you been on, how long has this been on your property?
It's, well, it was on my property for about two weeks, but after we wrote to the city and shared with them, I think somebody in Ms. Ferguson's office called them, they made the switch, and they cleaned the yard up, but they didn't plant the grass back, they still left a lot of cleared area, and they left some debris from how they left the material.
We'll follow up on that. In regards to the streets coming up to the church, now, they supposedly came back and fixed that, is that?
They did, Councilman Bradford, I want to thank you, they finally did. I heard somebody talk about it today, I think they said that it doesn't make sense to tear up a street, then fix it, and then go back and open it up again. I saw that happen around Mount Cana Baptist Church, there were no notices put out to our church members, there was a problem making access to the church, and until we had some members from our church come down to the council, I think, and call you, Councilman Bradford, and make some serious effort to make them address it, they have addressed it. I think it's a couple more areas they need to address, but they have worked on that.
Well, we'll follow up on the Lilian Street property, make sure that you restore it to what it, what you was.
Thank, thank, thank you, Councilman.
Any other concerns yet?
No, Councilman, thank you.
Thank you for coming down, Mr. Carey.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Real quick, Mr. Carey.
Yes.
Your property at 3600 Lilian Street, has that been corrected, cleaned up, and the materials removed yet?
Yes, it's been, the material has been moved, but of course, when they put all the heavy equipment, they left a big clear spot in the area where grass need to have been replanted, that has not been done. There were some debris left in the yard, my maintenance people cleaned the debris up, but we're looking for, I lost two tenants because the property was just blocked, and they said it was an eyesore. I sent pictures to every one of the councilmen, you could see the heavy equipment and everything in the yard. I lost two tenants because of the fact that they had it so blocked off, they didn't want to move in that area because they thought it was an eyesore.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Thomas is the owner of Pullley Construction. I made several efforts contacting him at no avail. At, well, we talked once by phone, and he told me to send him the pictures and send him the information, and we did that, and he has not responded yet after we sent him the pictures and sent him the information, and we sent emails to him.
Okay, we'll follow up.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And that is a requirement, Ms. Jones, is that whenever they utilize a person's property, it's to restore it back better or the same or better than it was.
It should be restored to the owner or the, to their satisfaction, and Mr. Carey's indicating that, you know, it's not to his satisfaction, so I will follow up.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and Council. I think it's just imperative that you, when we subcontract or let the contracts go on this other work, that you sit down and have a serious conversation with the owners of the company, because they're the people who are not fulfilling their obligation. I know these people may subcontract to them, but then when they get to work, it's a whole different story when it comes to communicating, and that's a problem with the constituents, I assure you.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carey, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On another subject, Mr. Carey, just, I thank you for being one of my great supporters, I'd be remiss if I didn't say hello to you this evening, you're looking real sharp.
Thank you, thank you, Councilman Green. Thank you for the good work all of you are doing. God bless you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Carey. Mr. Sammy Mears.
Sammy Mears, 1901 Centenary Boulevard, apartment M-110, Shreveport, 7111. And Councilman Butcher, thank you for the little presence I saw. Mummies don't want to go on vacation because they won't relax or unwind. It's a joke.
Wait, somebody.
I heard it on Svengiuli, on Svengiuli. The green light said to the red light, "Go ahead and look, I'm changing." The red light replied, "Stop looking at me, I'm changing." Another joke from Svengiuli. Now, going from the ridiculous to the sublime, I'm really disgusted with all the violent stuff that's been going on here in Shreveport and about especially one person killing another over a parking space, that's just ridiculous and stupid. It's uncalled for. I wish this nonsense would stop. Now, I said something a few weeks ago, and I'm going to say it again, if you break the law, be prepared to go to jail and be a jailbird if that's what you want. Otherwise, abide by the law. The law and rules are for your own good just as well. They are meant for a very good purpose. If you decide to break the rules, you're asking for big trouble, so stay out of trouble. Abide by the law and the rules. Wherever you live, wherever you go, or whatever you do, it's best that you do that, that way you'll stay out of trouble. And of course, I'm continuing to get help with MDA, if anyone can help me, just let me know, but I'm going to make 31 years by the time that September comes.
Mr. Versha Clark.
Definitely I am going to be short, Mayor, Council. Mr. Jones said about as much as I wanted to have said myself. The thing is, I did send all of you a copy of the proposal for a satellite police station. I did not get a phone call, any kind of information back as to whether or not you wanted to do something about that. And so when I got a call saying that this was going down, my thing was, why didn't someone tell us about this, considering that we had already put forth a proposal? And the only reason why I'm standing here now is because I was heavily quoted in the Times article, and so I just wanted you guys to know so that, you know, I don't have to be looking over my back, you know, for you guys, you know, so I think that we're straight and we need to talk. We need to talk these things out. There's a lot of things going on, and we need to figure out how to do and make this work. Mr. Clark is working on the 2030 Master Plan. I talked about this when I was running for City Council. Guys, that's your legislation. This is the thing that's going to help us, and that does with economic development and everything else. We need to put our heads together and make Shreveport great. Thank you.
Mr. Clark.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Green.
Mr. Clark.
Yes.
When I was at the Renaissance.
Renaissance Festival, yes.
You talked to me about some things, and also you had mentioned about the substation and all of that. All of whatever you're talking about is in here. I had no idea that, because if you look on your agenda at 91.
Mm-hmm.
It says declaring a public emergency in connection with the emergency repair. And then if you drop down in 92, then mine just say to declare a state of public emergency in District F. The 91 didn't get what mine got, whereas when I was putting it on the, on the agenda so that I could get the votes here, to get the conversation, to get everything in place, I had no idea as to how people would take it and take it another way.
Right.
But you talked to me about some things you wanted to do, you talked about a substation. In my thinking, once we do this, then all that we've talked about, from whatever neighborhood, from whatever part of my district, that all of it can be done because we have a, we have a conversation. Once this is done, that's when everything will happen, as me meeting with people and people picking up phone, talking to me, versus talking to somebody else, like, I would never interfere with his, Councilman Butcher's district. If a constituent of his called me, I'm going to tell them to call him. I'm not going to get with that constituent and put some gasoline on it and do whatever. I'm going to say, that's Councilman Inkpin's district, give him a call, versus me doing whatever. So I heard everything you said, and I promise you, as soon as we get this done today, all of what you're talking about, all of the meeting, I'm not responsible for what everybody else's district, but I believe that all the councilmen that's connected to City Grove, and it's more than City Grove in this, we are pledged to work together to do whatever needs to be done. So, wasn't trying to spite, but like I say, when you go back to your seat, look at number one, 91, and then look at number two. Both of them says public emergency.
Right.
But somewhere another 92 just got all out of the water, but thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. The only thing I was trying to do is clear up all of the quotations that were in the paper, okay?
Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Bradford.
Yes, sir.
I owe you sincerely apologies based on what Mr. Green said. Ms. Virginia Evans called me the other day in your district, and I should have hung up. I'm sorry, Mr. Bradford, it will not happen again, the interference of your constituents. I do accept my apology.
I accept your apology, but if you feel, if you feel, you can assist any, any constituent of mine, please don't hesitate to do so.
Mr. Cedric Murphy.
Mr. Chair, maybe we have an executive session for a minute?
Do you need assistance, Mr. Murphy? I'm sure we can give it to you.
Councilman, do you have a Mrs. Savant in your paperwork?
Do you mean a speaker?
Right.
I do.
Okay. I was going to try and do something with him, and he's disabled, and we were trying to get him to be able to post his comment through the phone, and I was going to try to see if that would be possible.
I don't have any objection to that, Mr. Murphy.
Mrs. Savant? Are you there? Okay, how do you do the, I'm going to show you a space. One of the things that's happening is that a lot of the, we're trying to get a way for individuals who are disabled, get some kind of assistance for them, and I'm so sorry, Mayor Perkins, Theo Hills, I mean, Councilman, but we're trying to, we're trying to work out something for those that cannot come to either give a video or do something to where their words should be heard. We do have a way to upload a file, so I'm working with Keith to see if people cannot get here and upload their message. So, this is Mrs. Savant, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Could you pass your hand? Go ahead, Mrs. Savant, you got two minutes.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mayor, thank you very much, and all of your councilmembers, thank you all, and our citizens for everything that you do. I am disabled, permanently disabled, spinal injury, and paraplegia. I nearly, I could have died on these city streets because of their deplorable condition. They are dangerous, and I, on multiple occasions, including the day the photograph was taken that Mr. Walker has, I had trouble navigating the city. That is a problem. Also, I am homebound, and we love Lyftline, Lyftline is great, but without the ability to get transportation on demand, my quality of life is dolefully damaged. My grandmother called me at 3:00 the other morning in tears at a nursing home in hospice. I couldn't get to her because there's no on-demand taxi. I just wanted to come for her, but I can't, so I implore you to please take a moment to consider the challenges that the disabled community face in terms of just fundamental qualities of life, being homebound with only one chance to make a booking that may or may not be able to accommodate you, if not, what I would console, I consider the pursuit of happiness or independence. Thank you.
He's a disabled singer and cannot give work in that environment, and I was able to introduce him to Mr. James, who works with the Arts Department downtown, and he is going to be able to do a benefit for the community here in Shreveport. Okay, now, can I do my three minutes? Just one thing worked and one thing didn't. I'm sorry, thank you, guys, I'll call you back.
Yes, sir.
There were no questions, but thank you.
Thank you.
I had a film I wanted to show. July 26 is the American Disability Act 29th anniversary, for which we have made some good inclusion efforts, and we are working toward better accessibility, but as I was sitting here in the audience, and all of these interns, and all of these programs, and all of these people, but are they not students? That can do, interns that are disabled?
Yes.
You know, were they not even asked?
That's right.
As far as some of the businesses that stood up as their interns?
Yes.
Are they not, they're not people with disabilities that qualify for these jobs? I'm hoping as we go further, because like in the, when the 30th anniversary comes up, I might not be here, but if so, it would be so, so inclusive.
Yes.
To see us included in these jobs. Our kids, you have kids who are disabled, guys, what are they drawn up to do?
Yes.
Where are their dreams? Where are their hopes? You know, where's the, where's the face they can see someone that looks like them at their age actually doing something? I'm not sure much time I have left, but I'm just asking, if disabilities are not on agendas or people with disabilities are not invited to participate, we are the fourth largest minority group, and we are getting our act together. Inclusion evolution is happening. We're not going anywhere, we're only getting better. And once again, July 26 is the American Disability Act 29th anniversary. I hope you guys can spread the word, I hope people are listening, and thank you.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Councilman.
Mr. Murphy, I always appreciate your comments. You've given me an idea for one piece of legislation that passed, and I will say that I'm looking at Ms. Fuller's screen for good ideas, and she has pulled up Lyft's website. Apparently, some municipalities encourage or require ride services like Uber and Lyft to provide handicapped services. handicapped services, and I think that's something that we should strongly consider here, and we'll do that.
I had, uh, requested that once before, that we at least have one taxicab that could be available for our chairs. Now, I'm flustered, but like the mayor's, you guys are amazing. I'm sure it's gonna happen.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. DiMario Mack.
DiMario Mack, twenty forty-five Lanier Street. Here to talk about this MLK ditch. Uh, first, I guess history with it is working with Patrick Furlong, the city engineer, towards the end of Ms. Todd's administration. I advised him that the ditch was eroding steadily, and that it was getting very close to possibly creating a sinkhole and swelling up the home, the home as well as people in it. Secondly, I advised that there were raccoons that were getting into a trash bin, causing panic for her and her family, and I told him I wanted him to make this a high priority on his list, uh, that we needed to get concrete in it to stop the erosion. He proceeded to tell me that he was not going to put the blood, sweat, and tears into the project. Unbeknownst to him, I'm a licensed engineer. One of those we take is to promote the general welfare of the public. How is it that mitigated, if not preventing, loss of life doesn't actually do that? Fast forward to the subcommittee for this bond agenda. He was told to put, Patrick was told to put all of, anything associated with the MLK, 'cause there were several projects, put that under one umbrella, put it under one number. There was a Green Oaks Lateral that was two point one million dollars. That was removed from the sub, was removed from the list without the subcommittee's knowledge, and as a result, now it's not funded. So, the MLK residents, as a result, we want to see, one, sixteen point four million dollars for this ditch. We want it totally appropriated for it. Two, we want to see the engineering submittals, thirty percent, sixty, ninety, one hundred percent construction documents. We want to see the engineering fees, the contractors' fees, as well as the contractor's submittals, because we don't want cheapen products on this project. Councilman Bradford, we've had you for five years, and for five years we have gotten pretty much nothing from you. If every year represents a strike, you're at strike five, and the only reason that is is because the Lord's kindness to you has allowed, he wants you to change your ways. Mayor Perkins, I interviewed for a position in your administration when you first started. Job called for a bachelor's degree and also highly desired professional engineer. I had both, plus a master's degree, and also lead certification, plus fifteen years of experience. How is it that you found in your heart to offer me fourteen thousand dollars less than what the previous person was making? The only difference was, he had white skin and a high school diploma. The Lord says to you, Mayor Perkins.
Chairman, I don't have to object on this. This doesn't have anything to do with the mayor.
He says to Councilman Bradford, he says to Councilman Bradford, he also says to Patrick Furlong, this is the Lord speaking. If you guys don't change your ways, he's going to destroy you, and I'm praying that you all would change and do what's right by everybody. You've been here to do right by white skin and black skin, not just some skin. Questions, thoughts, comments, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mack.
Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, councilman. My name is Sandra Mack. I live at twenty forty-five Lanier Street, Shreveport, Louisiana. I am here to ask a few questions in regards to the bond issue that's upcoming. Um, please provide more insight on the other projects in the package that are specific to the Cooper Road. Please, if you would, answer the questions detailed that I'm going to ask. The first question is, why didn't the bond study committee publicly announce that their meetings via press release and thorough social medias and through social media so that more people would have known about it? Can anybody answer that?
We'll let you finish with your time.
Okay, second one. Only twenty-five million is proposed for citywide street repairs. That's only four million more than, than the twenty-eleven bond proposal. Split seven ways, that won't mean much for the Cooper Road.
All right.
And, uh, that's, and that's basically what I'm asking.
Is that something that, I don't know if the administration would like to get with her, and?
Sure, yeah. Um, the committee meetings were published the same way that the council meetings are. Um, you know, we did follow the public meetings law when we advertised those. Um, also, you all probably recall that the mayor mentioned them during his public comments, you know, before the council meeting in which that occurred. Um, the third thing that occurred was that the council passed a resolution that, um, you know, was advertised again publicly and formally established the committee through the council, um, so that they could proceed with their work. Um, and then, of course, you know, the, the dollar amount of the projects is something that the council, you know, is, is still under review, um, and that number that is on the current list for streets that could grow or, you know, or be different than what's stated there. Um, there are definitely much more needs than there is funding, um, and hopefully we can, you know, get as much done with what we do have available.
All right.
Well, we would not have known about the meeting if, um, someone else wouldn't, wouldn't have, uh, let us know about it. And the constituents in the Cooper Road, they didn't know about it either.
Okay.
So, it wasn't really, you know, Councilman Bradford, maybe you can help answer this. Why wasn't it put out so that, you know, the, the entire constituents in the Cooper Road knew about it?
Ms. Mack, I can't say why some members didn't know about it, but those who wanted to know about it, knew about it. Notifying the public was
No.
Notifying the public was not my preview. Okay, that came under another area. The people, I, I was at MLK CDC opening house last week. The mayor was there as well. I attend all the meetings. I attend the meetings of the, of the Martin Luther King Neighborhood Association. Okay, my record and my service in my district is recognized and appreciated. Now, in regards to how this was promoted, I had, I had no hand in that. The people that I assigned to the committee inform me of the meetings and, and others attended. Now, all I'm saying is that I will be having a meeting.
When, sir?
I will be having a meeting in the MLK area and in my district regarding the bond proposals.
When?
I haven't said to meet, Ms. Mack. I say I will be having a meeting. I have, I have a lot of tasks, but my, I will be having a meeting, but I want you to know, and I want others to know. And I think you saw the demonstration chart that Mr. Florrie shown that a concrete ditch is not, is not necessarily the, the solution to what we are facing up there.
And the earthen, and leaving it earthen, sir, is, is not
No, but I'm, but I'm
not the answer as well, because
My last, my last
you guys are not maintaining it as is.
Well, you know, we've, we talked about that. Again, I, I can't
We're talking about it again.
I cannot dispatch one city worker to clean out a ditch, but I have, we have done it before, but, but I, my last statement is gonna be this, and I'm gonna elaborate on this further. Okay, and I said this before, that each, each year, we, we present a budget, and in that budget, we have certain projects to be done. Okay? There has been several bond proposals that has been passed over the last forty years in which the MLK community has been in the city. And I'm saying, if, if I researched those bond proposals, and you had representation, nothing was in those bond proposals to address the chronic conditions, especially when it comes to streets and drainage of the Cooper Road. And I'm just saying, I've been on the council for five years, four and a half years now.
In which nothing has been done.
And, and I'm saying that I can show you, I can show you, and I will show you when I call my meeting in MLK, in the area, that more streets have been asphalt overlaid under the four years that I've been there from the previous eight years. That's documented, Ms. Mack. And I'm just saying that, 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 that if you talk to Alma Rogers, or you talk to Benny Doty, who
I don't know anything about Alma Rogers.
No, no. My point is that I, I operate through, through, through the associations that are there for the community.
You're not getting the word out, sir. I'm not
Councilman Bradford, this is what, this is what we're gonna do.
Okay.
Let's, let's try to, 'cause we got other people who want to speak too from now. Can we just have them to, to, uh, address their questions or something outside and make sure we get their numbers?
I, I will be setting a meeting, and they, they'd be welcome to be there.
Okay.
And I apologize for any delays.
Thank you, Ms. Mack.
Counselor Nippon. I yield a
Counselwoman Fuller.
Mrs. Mack, Mrs. Mack, wait. Um, today we had an infrastructure meeting, and we discussed the possibility of, in each of our committee meetings that we have, public safety, infrastructure, et cetera, where there are pieces of the bond issues that need to be discussed and elaborated on.
Yes.
That we're going to be having explicit reports from staff to explain all the things that we can discuss how we want to prioritize those. My question to you is, do you use email?
I do.
Um, Mr. Hanson, will you do me a favor? There's a way that you can sign up to get alerts when there's meetings.
Mm-hmm.
And it'll come to your email, and if you would sign up for the infrastructure, you'll know when that meeting is.
Will do.
And if you're able to come, you're welcome to, because us are open to the public.
Thank you so much for your kindness.
Mr. Craig Lee.
Craig Lee, eleven twelve Prospect Street. Uh, on yesterday, I spoke at the Caddo Boja Port Authority's monthly board meeting, specific to millions of dollars of local tax contract procurement dollars spent over the past five years, with virtually no contracts being awarded to African-American businesses and other ethnic businesses in the Shreveport Boja City area. Out-of-state firms claiming to be ethnic minorities and majority-white firms procured the lion's share of those tax dollars. Now, I thought that was very important as it relates to the presentation that I just heard from the current project managers on the consent bond decree work. Uh, in reference to his presentation on the largest capital project in the history of the city of Shreveport, I heard no focus on economic equity in contract procurement specific to African-American firms and other ethnic businesses from Shreveport Caddo Parish. Now, I did hear reference to fifty percent fair share commitment to the project management and a subtle commitment to subcontractors, but it's very important that you all understand, fair share does not mean ethnic minorities. It is a race-neutral plan, and what we basically have right now is a situation where currently, less than three percent of Shreveport's contract procurement dollars are being awarded to African-American firms. This has been the big push that myself and Councilman Bradford have fought for for over twenty years as it relates to the disparity study, and this definitely, um, needs to be addressed. Uh, Shreveport is approximately sixty percent African-American, therefore African-American businesses must receive equitable share of the public sector contracts. And when we juxtapose this as it relates to crime, when you don't have African-American firms being able to focus on hiring those individuals, especially who are coming out of prison, now what is left for them to do other than to repeat, re- reoffend, and do what they are accustomed to doing? So, it is, it is paramount that African-American firms be a part of this process, and one of the things that I talked about some months ago was the duplication of work that I've seen go on in the Queensborough area. There definitely needs to be some monitoring of this, because these are tax dollars that are being spent via the city of Shreveport, the port of Caddo, and African-American firms and other ethnicities local to Shreveport are not receiving any of those resources. So, I urge you guys to make sure that we have some monitoring, uh, going on of this specific to this issue. Any questions?
Yes.
Counselwoman Fuller.
Hey, Mr. Lee, is it satisfactory to you for a minority business that is a black business to be involved but to not be local to Shreveport?
No, it's not. But the, the only time, and I'll be very clear on this, because when we fought to get the fair share program put in place in nineteen ninety-eight, if you don't have local capacity, uh, of an African-American firm, what you now need to do is connect that particular firm. Um, you, you take Ricky Hall's Hall Builders. Ricky Hall has the capacity to learn any particular skill. He needs to be paired with, and, another entity so that they could build that particular capacity locally. But if they're excluded from that entire process, then we have an issue. Some of this work actually, uh, is there. I'll give you a prime example, uh, Councilman Fuller. Uh, when the Shreveport Regional Airport, uh, the last renovations were being done, Slack, Allos, and Merrimack won that contract. They had never designed an airport before. They got the contract, and guess what they did? That's the prime. They subbed the work out. They just put twenty, forty percent on the money. I mean, if anybody could get a prime contract and just sub the work out, that's a pretty good deal. So, capacity only becomes an issue when it really comes to African-American firms, and, and that needs to be eliminated.
While I have a floor, can you think of any cities that have good examples of pairings like this that give an opportunity for businesses to build that capacity but stay within the, the legal parameters of the fair share program?
Atlanta, Georgia, I mean, Atlanta, Georgia is the, the creme de la creme of that, and they've graduated those particular firms, and those firms now, for example, um, the city of Atlanta is undergoing a, almost a billion-dollar renovation on their airport. So, those firms like Russell Construction, Moody Construction, who were groomed in that process back in the eighties and nineties, they are now handling major work so that those cities don't have to go outside of their areas to procure, uh, other firms. So, yeah, that, that, they are the creme de la creme answer to that.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Chairman.
Counselman Bradford.
Thank you. I just, I just want to say thank you for, for continuing, uh, the struggle, the fight. It's no secret that, that, uh, two decades or more, that's what our priority has been. Because again, I keep referencing the reports, the Mount Auburn Report, the time, the time to study report, I mean, the time to choose
Time to choose.
which, which, which warned us, which warned us of the trend and how the city was transitioning, and how if we did not address the disparity in the, in the inequities that African-Americans was facing at the time, and yet it was transitioning to a majority city, that if we did not put certain measures in place, the things that we're experiencing now would, would not be happening.
Exactly.
And, uh, we've had opportunities, as you know, uh, we had more, would you agree? We had more African-American contractors and businesses who, who could, who could be a part of this type of work, the consent decree work, twenty years ago than we have now?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that, they've pretty much been, to, to, to be a contracting entity, there are so many insurances and requirements that you have to carry, that if they are not tapped into the work twenty years ago, they can't, most of them are not gonna be able to survive today. And so, I do agree with you. There were multiple, uh, entities, uh, but you referenced one of the reports, and I think we need to share that with the council sometime. If you remember Professor Ken Hines, a white professor from LSU, he let it be known in that one report that the main issue in the city of Shreveport Caddo Parish was and still is racism, connected to what you're just saying, because he, he clearly stated the history of the city of Shreveport and these racial issues, similar to what I experienced yesterday at the Caddo Boja Port. They got a nice program, and you all have talked to Martin Burrell, but again, those contracts are not being led to qualified African-American firms, and when you don't have that situation, those entities end up running out of business. Professor Ken Hines, for telling the truth, was run out of the city of Shreveport and went to the city of Dallas, and I think I should reach back, um, to him, because he was like, laid it all out, like you said, over twenty years ago in these reports.
Craig, and I'm gonna just say this, and, and because again, uh, when, and you was with me when, uh, when Andrew Young was here back in December, and we approached him regarding Atlanta.
Mm-hmm.
Atlanta is the model. Uh, and he said that, uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a myth that Mayor Jackson said, if we can't get minority participation, and his definition was, at that time, was black businesses involved in the building of the, uh, Hart Jackson Airport, that he wasn't gonna sign any contracts out.
Exactly.
Without minority participation. Now, my, my exhortation to the mayor is that if there's a way, there's a will, and there's a will the other way. He mentioned it would take the courage of the administration to make these things happen.
Oh, absolutely.
And have to, and it, and have to forge the will of this, of the interest of the city on these type of projects. It would be a tragedy, a travesty if we spend a billion dollars and we don't upgrade our minority business apparatus. It would be a shame, and, and I'm not gonna sit here and let that happen without fighting for it.
And, and, and I'm a one-hundred percent agreement with you. Now, I'll close with this, uh, Mayor, because I, I moved back to Shreveport, I was relocated back here in ninety-four from Atlanta, so that's why I spoke on Atlanta, and what you're saying is absolutely the case. Mayor Jackson told the white business community in Atlanta very clearly, if, if black folks don't get forty-five percent of every dollar that comes through this city, grass will grow at Hartsfield Airport. And, and they fought it, and he pushed, and they ended up doing it, and now look at Atlanta. It is the prototype for world empowerment for African-American businesses, and the city of Atlanta ain't missed a beat. And that's what has to happen in the city of Shreveport. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Those are all the requests to speak, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, there are no executive appointments to be considered today. There are no items on a consent agenda for introduction. Uh, Mr. Thompson, can you proceed with resolutions on second reading and final passes, please?
Uh, the first is Resolution eighty-six. It proposes a co-text amendment to the Shreveport Unified Development Code for consideration by the Metropolitan Land Commission.
Um, motion to postpone.
Second?
It's been moved by Councilwoman Fuller, and second by Councilman Bradford to postpone. On eighty-six, please vote. Motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Resolution ninety authorizes execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between the Caddo Parish nine-one-one Communications District Number One and the city of Shreveport.
So, Mr.?
It's been moved by Councilman Butcher.
Second.
It's second by Councilwoman Fuller. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Resolution ninety-one declares a public emergency in connection with the emergency repair of the city of Shreveport Water Booster Station located at Sixty-Eighth Street and Union Avenue and ratifying the expenditure of approximately two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-eighty dollars of water and sewer revenue bonds.
So, most. Second?
It's been moved by Councilman.
May I speak, Mr.?
It's been, it's been, it's been moved by Councilman Fleury and second by Councilman Bradford. Discussion with Councilman Nicholson.
Uh, Mr. James, I noticed, excuse me, she's not.
She's stepped out?
Well, uh, Mr. Mayor, if you know the answer to this question, that's fine. If not, I'll ask another time. I noticed that this emergency that we're ratifying occurred in December of last year, uh, and I, I just wondered why the seven-month delay for the request?
Yeah, I'll, I'll have to wait till the C A O. returns.
Okay.
I'm not sure why, uh, yeah.
Well.
Is Director Featherson there?
No, she's not. Mr. Featherson is out to the back.
There she goes.
Uh, Ms. Featherson, not.
Well, she's on her way up. Hey, Sammy. Hey, Sammy. How do you, how do you catch a unique rabbit?
You don't.
Unique up on it.
Excuse me for a moment. I, you have several other people in the, we've been here since three o'clock. Uh, we turned to know information, and she says there, and we got a few more people that need to speak, that has not speak, that has not spoken at this time. So she said, the, the lady here said it was turned in.
I don't have a request right now. Let me, let me find out what's going on.
Okay, so we just didn't want to be sitting there and being y'all carrying on.
Uh, Ms. Featherson, I asked the administration why, uh, we're just now seeing a, a resolution to ratify an emergency expenditure that occurred in December of last year.
Um, the emergency occurred in, um, December. Work was not complete for two or three or so months later. Um, we were dealing with the invoice. We wouldn't bring the ratification until we had the final number.
Is, is, is there a rule concerning the amount of time that can elapse before ratification is requested?
Um, not that I'm aware of.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. If there's no other discussion, please vote. My motion carries with seven. Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Resolution ninety-two, uh, declares a state of public emergency in District F to increase police presence and effectiveness in District F to authorize and request the chief of police to devise a plan with the city marshal and the sheriff, federal authorities and the state police to eliminate rampant crime in District F and otherwise provide with respect thereto.
So.
Uh, second to motions, Chairman.
Okay, it's been moved by Councilman Green and second by Councilman Bradford. Uh, discussion, Councilman Bradford, please.
Well, I was gonna ask, um.
I was gonna ask Mr. Thompson before any discussion if he would read the resolution.
Oh, I'm sorry, I apologize. Sure.
You need a copy of this, John?
Yes.
Uh, I've read the title already, it's by Councilman James Green, whereas City Council District F is comprised of the city, uh, Shreveport Police District Seven, Eight, and most of District Nine. And whereas from January twenty-eighteen through June twenty-nineteen, the Shreveport Police Department reports the following crime statistics for Police Districts Seven, Eight, and Nine. Nineteen homicides, fifty-four rapes, one-hundred-and-twenty-one persons robbed, seventeen businesses robbed, one-hundred-and-ninety-eight aggravated batteries, two-hundred-and-thirty-three aggravated assaults, five-hundred-and-thirty-nine residential burglaries, one-hundred-and-sixty-four business burglaries, four purs snack, purses snatched, four-hundred-and-eighty-five instances of shoplifting, ninety-one thefts from businesses, and five-hundred-and-twenty-six thefts from residences, two-hundred-and-seven automobile accessories, uh, theft, seven-hundred-and-twenty-five packages or other items taken from automobiles, two-hundred-and-seventy-seven automobiles stolen, and three-hundred-and-eighty-one reports of general theft. And whereas school truancy is a problem, some students leave school during the school day and commit burglaries, and other crimes engage in fights and disturb the peace. And whereas loud music from automobiles regularly disturbs and annoys residents of District F, particularly the sick, the elderly, and the homebound. And whereas assail and use of illegal drugs in many neighborhoods in District F, uh, has become so pervasive that these neighborhoods can be described as drug-infested. And whereas felons, drug dealers, and other criminals use guns to commit violent crimes, and shots can be heard all during the night. And whereas many residents in District F live in a constant state of fear and anxiety which affect, affects their health and state of well-being. And whereas the extremely high number of crimes openly and brazenly committed in District F, the lack of economic opportunities, the open-air drug markets, the large number of guns present, and the resultant fear, anxiety, and feelings of helplessness experienced by law-abiding citizens constitute a state of public emergency in District F that must be addressed and ameliorated immediately. And whereas it is therefore necessary and proper for the police chief and the city of, of Shreveport to be authorized and encouraged to invite other law enforcement agencies to join the Shreveport Police Department to make every effort to, uh, eradicate the pervasive lawlessness that exists in City Council District F. Now therefore be it resolved that the state of public emergency exists in District F because of rampant crime, which must be ameliorated, and therefore the chief of police is requested to increase patrols and to aggressively combat crime in District F. Be it further resolved that the chief of police of Shreveport is authorized and requested to invite the sheriff of Caddo Parish, the Shreveport City Marshal, the United States Attorney for the Western District of Louisiana, other federal law enforcement agencies, and Troop G of the Louisiana State Police, to devise a plan which uses the authority and the resources of their collective offices to eliminate rampant crime in District F and to execute that plan until rampant crime no longer exists in the, in District F.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair? Please.
Thank you. From hundreds of calls, uh, meeting citizens, asking me, as to what can we do to make a district, a difference in the district that I serve, we are declaring this, uh, declaration of public emergency for District F, but not just for the police presence and not just for the state of emergency. When you look at my district, it's different from all of the other districts up here. I don't know of any other district that you could read these same titles that's going on in that district. So, we've gone to work to put together a plan. I've talked to the mayor, I've talked to the police chief, I've talked to pastors. This plan is a plan that will represent people, preachers, and the police. One, there are a number of aspects to it. I've talked to Chief Raymond. By next council meeting, uh, we will, uh, have Plan One ready. In thirty days, the mayor has given me some assistance to help me to go through my district to get different information. So in thirty days, we should have this entire plan together. As of now, there are certain pieces that I have. It's all about the power of love. We gotta love one another. In my district, there are no, we got vacant lots everywhere, no houses are being built, no businesses are coming, no economic development. As they said, people need jobs. In this piece that we have, there will be a piece for jobs. There will also be a revival of love, and that revival is the power of love. It has restoration, regeneration, resurrection, rejuvenation. Has a Bible verse, "A new commandment I give you: Love one another as I have loved you. Also you must love one another, and by this will all men know that you are my disciples." And you know, sometimes, you know, we put different quotes on Facebook as to how Christ-like we are, but when it comes time to really show how Christ-like we are, we fail to do it. And so, there's another piece that's for the sin, crime, drugs, violence, whatever. And it says, "Except the Lord build a house; they did labor labor in vain." So, starting today, uh, we will be going forth with all of the pieces. Uh, the first piece will happen on August the first. Uh, the chief will be, he's aware of what's gonna be happening. And so, I just asked the citizens of District F, one, I will be calling community meetings. At this point in time, this has nothing to do with any other district other than District F. I was elected to serve the people in that district. They've asked me for some help. They said, "Whatever you can do, Councilman, we need to do it." I will have community meetings with every aspect of my district, as I did before, and we will come up with a model. We will have the model in place within thirty days. And again, I'd like to thank you, Mayor, for giving me the assistance. Uh, Chief Raymond, I don't know if he's gone yet.
Go back to the side.
I talked to Chief Raymond about this some months ago. Uh, I've gone to numerous of killings. There was a young man came up here once, and he spoke to this council. There was an incident that has happened. And he said publicly, "Councilman Green, your district is messed up. It is the worst district in this city." I didn't do it, it didn't happen overnight, but we're gonna get it worked out. And again, thank you all, the citizens of District F, for allowing me to be, uh, your elected official, and we're going to do whatever it takes to make a difference. Uh, thank you. And I just asked my colleagues if you all would, uh, support this legislation, and possibly you can find some good in it as to going into your district. Uh, Councilwoman, one of your constituents called today and left me a message that she thought my district bumped up to Highland, but it doesn't. And so, uh, it doesn't bump up against Highland. Uh, she was coming to the meeting, but I don't think she showed up, but, uh, that's, that's all, Mr. Jim. I yield for it, Mr. Bradford.
Thank you, Bradford. Thank you very much. Councilman, I, I, I will commend you for your efforts to resolve the issues of your That's, that's what, that's what you're supposed to do. But let me ask you a couple of questions, if you don't mind. Do you feel that the, the title of a state of public emergency is, is, is extremely exaggerated?
Well, actually, thank you, Councilman. We can extreme or exaggerate anything. I showed you on the, if you look on the council agenda, ninety-one says declaring a public emergency in connection with emergency repair of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana. Now, we could take that same title and make it any way we want to. It's all in how we perceive it. It's all in how, what we wanna do. Then you come right down to the next, ninety-two. The only difference in the basic wording is T.O., to, declare. I'm not responsible for what they write in the paper. I'm not responsible how the media do whatever they do. I'm responsible for this district. Whatever it takes to get a conversation, whatever it takes to get me some help in community development, to get some apartments, to get some houses in my district, to get some businesses come in my district, whatever language it takes to get it stirred up, I will use that language. It's not violent language. And if you look at the legislation, if you look at the resolution, if you see on here, show me another district where there have been nineteen homicides. Show me a district that has what this has. You know, so here again, it's kinda like, you have poison water, but you wanna put roses around it just to make it look good. I have a district that needs some help, and, you know, I could change it and say, well, what would you think we should say? What, what, what should I say?
Well, let me just say this, and I, and I answer that. I'm not disagreeing that, that the statistics that you presented should, should, should create action. I mean, it's an action, it's an action-driven resolution. Uh, you, you're gonna work out the details in implementing certain phases of this action-driven resolution, but I'm just trying to ascertain in my mind and to the public's mind, are this council declaring a state of public emergency versus using, using a different, uh, a different language would, would, uh, would be more appealing? Um, I, I think, I think there need to be action. Ain't no question about that. But I don't know.
Mr. Bradford.
Okay, so, how about this? It's kinda like this. You, I'm from, you from, you, you were basically here in Shreveport, so you'll say tomato. Or you'll say tomato, and I'll say tomato.
Well, the next one, that's all.
Well, let me, let me, let me. Ma'am, can I, can I refer to the mayor real quick? And then I'll come back to you. How do you, how do you view the, the language, or how do you view the, the, and how can we, how can we move in, in, in addressing the issue that the councilman has in his resolution?
Yeah, well, I, first of all, I deferred to the councilman about what he needed in his particular district. He asked me for assistance, and I, I wanted to provide that to him. Um, I do understand, um, Stefan, actually, me and him went to middle school and high school together, uh, and he used to beat up on me on the football fields, I don't think it's isolated. Um, I, you know, I do, uh, perception really matters in our community. I'll, I'll be frank with you. The, uh, some of our, we have some neighborhood associations that are on social media, and some of our own community members, uh, often talk like we're in Baghdad, Iraq. I've been to Baghdad, Iraq. Um, and this is not it. Um, the statistics show that. And, um, there's always things we can do, and we are. And there's always things we can do, and we are always making our community safer, but we have to realize, when somebody's thinking of Shreveport, we talk about business and economic development. When I go out into, to America and I'm meeting these CEOs of companies, we gotta realize when they think of Shreveport, they often get on the internet. So, all the negative things you say on the internet, they often come and do site visits, all the negative things you say in your community, these businesses are picking up on it. So, we can't have it both ways. Perception really matters. We gotta talk about our community in positive lights, but if Councilman Green, who is way more intimately involved in, in his district than I am, thinks that this will help with economic development and safety and perception, then, again, I'm gonna support him in any way I can.
Okay. And let me yield to Councilman, Council, Council.
Councilman Green, how, how would you feel about maybe striking the part about a state of public, to strike those three and just say, "Declare an emergency"?
Is struck. Can you strike now, Ms. Thompson?
I think that would help. I'm just asking.
Yes, sir, is struck. Yes, sir, is struck. Yes, sir.
So, I'm trying to be the wordsmith, you know?
Yes, sir, is done.
Okay. Councilwoman Fuller.
Thank you, Chair. Councilman Green, would it, would it delay the process that you're already starting with everyone if we postpone voting on this for two weeks?
Well, it, it will.
Will it, what you're trying to do?
With what I have in place, with what I'm trying to do, it would delay it, and that would mean that what I have set with the chief as to happening next month, then that would happen in September, then somebody else might get killed.
So, you wouldn't?
Somebody else might get hurt.
You wouldn't be able to work on the process of getting your full report together and then presenting this resolution with that in place with it?
Right now, what I could do, the striking out part, let's just strike that out and just support it, and we'll go from there. And what I'll do is, I'll put my hand on my heart, and I pledge not to ever use that word again. And, or I'll do like Councilman Flurried here with Councilman Bradford. If I've offended you all about using that word, I am so sorry.
Well, I, I, I still have the floor, Ms. Chairman, and I think we're making some progress. Again, it's similar to, it's similar to what we talked about at the previous meeting, is setting an, and, and sitting, sitting, setting a pathway to do an investigation on certain, certain aspects of our, of our audit concerns. Councilman Green's intentions are to put together, because he's made contacts, it appears, with various entities and organizations within his district, in, in this city as well, to move forward to, to put in place some solutions, remedies to some of these issues that he brought forward. I think, I think, I think the emergency was my concern. I mean, to, to say it's a state of emergency. I asked, I asked the city attorney to, to consider an alternative language, then, then we can make, make a, consider that language. But I don't, I do not reject the intent of what he wanna accomplish here. Can you, can you, can you, can you read that for me, if you please?
Yes, sir. The suggestion that I made to Councilman Bradford was to amend the title to a resolution to authorize the mayor to collaborate with various law enforcement agencies in an effort to reduce crime in District F.
Is it? I'm good.
Ms. Chairman.
Okay.
We have a couple of technical issues. One is, any amendment has to be in writing. The second thing is that we're changing the title, so we would probably have to suspend the rules and introduce a new resolution with whatever language the council wants in it. I don't know whether, do you have any other? We're trying to transfer to the city attorney the resolution itself, so that we can make those changes and have a new resolution to be introduced, but it's gonna take some time to do that.
Okay. I have Councilman Nicos, and then I'm gonna ask the city attorney to read that to me once, once again.
Councilman Green, I, I thank you for taking the time to do what you thought was best for your district. You know, we, we just had, this week, an individual killed in Anderson Island over a parking space. So, when you talk about deep concern for crime that is affecting the lives of the people you have been elected to represent, I, I hear you, and I am, I am sympathetic and supportive of your giving all the help that the mayor can, can give you. I, I, I do think that there are some potential downsides to just the phrase "state of public emergency," which you said you've not, you're not hung up on. I, I guess we could all wordsmith it, but we might just revise the resolution to cut out "state of public emergency" and put "crisis." That would, that would accomplish the same, the same purpose.
That's, that's good.
I, I, I think, I hear Mr. Thompson saying that because we have to have these things in writing, we, we might just very briefly delay this by postponement, and then we'll have it wrapped up in a bow and, and ready to go in two weeks with unanimous support. And I don't wanna, I, I'd like to do that with your blessing. I don't wanna, I don't wanna do it if you're eager to get it done.
Point of order.
Yes, yes.
It has been revealed that if we was to move to the next item, the city attorney and her staff could amend the title. We can suspend the rules today, vote on the new title, and we can accomplish this today. That's, that's the desire of the councilman. That's, that's the desire of the councilman.
I'm, I'm, I'm willing for that to be the course of action, provided "state of public emergency" is struck.
No, no, that's, that's, that's the premise. The premise, the premise is that "state of emergency" would not be the title of, that we will be considering today.
Not that the title nor the substance of phrase is used in the body of the resolution as well. And then we'll all, I mean.
Are you applicable to that, Councilman Green?
I'm good, yeah.
All right. Councilman Butcher.
Councilman Green, I, I too, when we sat down for the first time, we met, Councilman Green brought this to me, and I think he did to other council members, a similar plan. For me, there's not one council district in the city of Shreveport that's not affected by crime and violent crime. I applaud Councilman Green for bringing this up. I don't necessarily like other council members, like the "state of emergency" being in there, but this is a step, this is a stepping point for us to start. I personally have, have, and, and I'm sure that other council members up here, any death that happens because of murder in the city of Shreveport affects me. It bothers me. It's on our watch. We can't blame anybody else but ourselves for what's going on in our city. It's easy to say, "Well, it's the mayor's fault. It's the police chief's fault." No, it's us as a body, and it doesn't matter if it's happening in Cedar Grove, MLK, Moretown, or Anderson Island. It's happening to us all. When I started running for this, I had, had a gentleman tell me, "Well, it doesn't affect your neighborhood. Why do you worry about crime?" Well, exactly what the mayor said, when he's going trying to sell this city to other Fortune 500 companies or even the Air Force for that, they see our crime issue whenever you've got a child or, or the father of a child that is shot and killed in broad daylight over a parking spot, that makes us all, as Shreveporters, look bad. So, I applaud Councilman Green for, for putting this together, but, but I'm concerned about all of the city as well, and hopefully this might be a stepping stone for us all to use in our own districts. But I just want the, the public to understand, for me, it's, it's personal. I, I don't like to see us as citizens killing each other.
No.
It's, we've got to, we've got to, we gotta get this under control. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Mr. Chairman. Okay, I need, I need to get some clarity on where we at.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
What they're doing is working on the title to fix it the way that it is desired of this body, and they should have that within about the next five or ten minutes. So, if we would, if we could postpone it and then come back to it, then I really would appreciate it.
Ms. Chairman, while everybody's still on this, if we just did a resolution to increase police presence and effectiveness in District F, to authorize and request the chief of police to devise a plan with the city marshal and the sheriff, federal authorities and the state police to eliminate rampant crime in District F, and to otherwise provide with respect thereto, and then, in the first "now therefore be it resolved" paragraph, take out a "state of public emergency," and it would read "now therefore be it resolved" that because of rampant crime, which must be ameliorated, and therefore the chief of police is requested to increase patrols.
I, I, I agree. I go along with that.
Yes, I'm good. Is that the name, is that the language you're passing forward?
Sammy. 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 How do you catch a tame rabbit? How do you catch a tame rabbit? The tame way.
Let's move on to ninety-four.
Not postpone in the sense of postpone.
Ninety-three.
Yes. Postpone it until later in the meeting.
Chairman, I'd like to, I'd like to withdraw resolution ninety-three.
Okay. Just gonna withdraw. Ask them to withdraw ninety-three?
All right. Okay, ninety-three has been withdrawn by the author. Ninety-four, authorizes the mayor to dedicate the twenty-four hundred block of Murphy Street at Poland Avenue.
So, move, Ms. Chairman.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Green. There's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven, Ms. Thompson.
We're not, introduction of resolutions. Resolution ninety-five authorizes use of certain city-owned equipment by the Junior League of Shreveport, Bossier. Resolution ninety-six authorizes execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Providence House.
Move for introduction?
Second.
We're not, introduction of ordinances. Ordinance eighty-seven amends the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance eighty-eight amends the 2019 capital improvements budget. Ordinance eighty-nine amends the 2019 budget funding contractual services provided to sport train by Metro Management Associates, Inc. Ordinance ninety amends the 2019 downtown entertainment district fund budget. Ordinance ninety-one amends chapter seventy-four, Article Three, Section seventy-four dash fifty-three of the Code of Ordinances regarding collection for higher annual permit fees and otherwise provided with respect thereto. Ordinance ninety-two amends chapter one, general provisions of the city of Shreveport, Louisiana Code of Ordinances relative to misdemeanor offenses and to otherwise provided with respect thereto. Ordinance ninety-three authorizes the mayor to execute a lease of city-owned property located at eight eighty Texas Avenue in, to Cattle Management and otherwise provided with respect thereto. Ordinance ninety-four amends section twenty-six dash two seventy-four, execution of contracts associated with purchases of the city of Shreveport and otherwise provided with respect thereto. Ordinance ninety-five amends section two dash two, city vehicles of the city of Shreveport Code of Ordinances. Ordinance ninety-six is a zoning matter, zoning case number nineteen dash three twenty-eight dash C. It amends the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the west side of Shreveport Blanchard Highway at the intersection of North Lake Shore Drive from R.A. Rural Agriculture District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance ninety-seven is a zoning matter, zoning case number nineteen dash three thirty-seven C. It rescinds ordinance one twenty-nine of 2017 and amends the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the southeast side of Fourth Street, approximately four, five hundred and eighty feet east of Marshall Street in Shreveport Cattle Parish from I dash M.U. Industrial Mixed Use District to I-2 Heavy Industrial District. Ordinance ninety-eight is a zoning case number nineteen dash three forty-three dash C. It amends the official zoning map of the city of Shreveport Unified Development Code by rezoning property located on the east side of Municipal Pier Road, approximately one thousand one hundred and fifty feet east of Lake Shore Drive from C-one Neighborhood Commercial District and R-one seven Single Family Residential to O.S. Open Space District. Those are all of the items to be introduced.
All right. Is there a motion to introduce these ordinances?
So, move.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Bradford, and seconded by Councilman Butcher.
We're not in ordinances on second reading and final passage. Ordinance seventy-eight amends section twenty-six dash two twenty. Affidavit attesting that city contract was not secured through employment or payment of solicitor, solicitor to chapter twenty-six Finance Article Six Contracts Division One, generally of the city of Shreveport. Code of ordinances relative to requirements of an affidavit for city contracts and otherwise provided with respect thereto. There is one technical amendment. It's amendment number one. It changes disbarment to debarment in subsection D.
Ms. Chairman.
Councilman Nicos.
Ms. Chairman, this is my legislation. The administration has raised a concern about this proposed ordinance, and for that reason, I'm gonna move to postpone it additional two weeks. Before we do that, I would like to move for the adoption of the amendment, which, as Mr. Thompson indicates, just changes one word from disbarment to debarment, correction of misspelling. And so, my, my first motion is to adopt the amendment.
Second.
Question?
Sorry.
The, the, the adoptative amendment has no bearing on the adoption of the.
No, no, sir. If you vote yes to adopt the amendment, you're just doing me the courtesy of allowing me to correct a misspelling in the document.
Well, let's do that.
Thank you very much.
Motion carries with seven.
And, and my second motion is to postpone.
I second that motion.
It's been moved by, the author and seconded by Councilwoman Fuller to postpone. Please vote.
Ordinance eighty amends section ten dash eighty-four, chapter ten of the Code of Ordinances relative to physical separation of sales of high alcohol content liquor for consumption off the premises. There is one amendment, and I think amendment number two was in the making, but I don't know whether it's ready yet.
Have Councilman Butcher up to speak.
Chief Raymond or Sergeant Cisco, whoever's still here, I can't see. If, if y'all could come up and kind of explain what's going on with this, there's some, some legal issues that have come up, and, and I want the police chief and Sergeant Cisco to explain to us what's, what's going on.
I've got some comments, and then Sergeant Cisco is certainly available. He's more knowledgeable than I. With reference to alcohol ordnance, he'll correct me, nudge me if I say something that is incorrect. A couple of things I just wanna point out, first of all, and some clarification as to how we got to this point, 'cause obviously there are a lot of people in the audience that are both for and against changing the, the ordinance as is, and I just wanna clarify how we got to where we are, and I may be able to offer a couple of pieces of, of knowledge, however limited they may be viewed and considered when you look at this, this amendment. A business was opening up in Shreveport that wanted to have a business model that was not currently, although we do not believe is currently supported by a section ten eighty-four, and that business model was to sell liquor as well as some other items. The current section ten eighty-four, and I'm gonna just read a couple of pieces to clarify my point, it discusses physical separation, and specifically subsection A says, "Physical separation shall consist of an opaque wall at least six feet in height, in height, with no door or entrance from the area in which such high alcohol content liquors are sold into the area in which other business operations are located." And the key word here is "other business operations." And in subsection B, it says, "As used in this section, the term 'other business operations' showing any business operation, including or not limited to restaurants and businesses where alcoholic beverages are sold for consumption on the premises." where alcoholic beverages are sold for consumption on the premises, but shall not include sales of beverages of low alcohol content for consumption off premises." In the definition section of section ten regarding alcohol ordinance, we don't define what other business operations are, and so I reached out to the city attorney's office just prior to council meeting to get some clarification. If other business operations refer to an actual physical business being located in the same store, then it's possible that this other model that was wanting to be opened would be legal. If other business operations refer to the selling of other products above and beyond that of liquor, then is our premise that the other business model would not be allowed by statute. I think that's kind of what started this discussion to begin with. The other thing that I want to point out, so first of all, I'd like to have that question answered, to know whether the business in question could or could not operate based on their model. The other thing I want to discuss is last year, there were some changes made discussing the definitions of alcohols. We refer to beer, wine, and liquor in their definitions, but what was not done during those amendments is we kept the wording for "high alcohol content," and "high alcohol content" refers to anything over six percent alcohol. The problem is that, well, it's not a problem, the concern is that there are some beer and wines that are over six percent alcohol. So we really need to differentiate. The easiest way from our perspective to do that is to remove the terminology of "high alcohol content" from throughout section ten, and then you just simply refer to beer, wine, and liquor. Specifically, when you talk about alcohol ordinances, you generally are talking about beer and wine in one category and liquor in another category. So this wording for "high alcohol content" confuses the matter, because all three of those products could be considered high alcohol content. So I think it'd be easy to just remove that definition from the ordinances as a whole, and that may give some more clarification to what you currently have in section ten eighty-four before you made additional changes or amendments that might not be necessary if this fits your initial reason for discussing it.
Chief, thank you, I appreciate that. Ms. Krill, what's your thought? I know you just got thrown into this, but what, I mean, you've been involved the whole way, but I mean, as far as this question came up, what's your thought on that?
Yes, sir. I told the chief that I would look into it. I've requested a copy of the legislation that actually enacted this portion of the statute so I can read it and understand the intent of the legislation and those who brought it forth, and once I have that information, I'll be in a better position to research the issue and get back with you guys.
Thank you.
It's up.
Agent Cisco, as far as the physical separation thing goes, we've heard a lot of people speaking about the pros and the cons of it. I'm not, at this point, and maybe this is a Ms. Krill question, actually, should I withdraw this completely? Should I postpone it to work on the verbiage? What would be the best action for us right now with this? Because this particular ordinance and the amendment is not going to work. So, because right now, and let me make it clear, I don't know if the chief really said this, but I'm going to say it, right now, we have stores, grocery stores, that are selling actually high content alcohol that goes against the way the ordinance is written right now. So as we dug deep into this, we realized that there are actually grocery stores that are selling wines and beers that are over six percent, which violates the ordinance as it was written by the previous council a year ago. Is that right, pretty much?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Because that definition of high content alcohol is still in legislation, it muddies the waters on everything. That should have been taken out whenever they defined beer, wine, and spirits or liquor. They missed that one definition, which confuses what we have now.
I will also say this, as far as physical separation goes, I think there's ways to achieve physical separation without, with addressing everybody's issues. One that I've thought of, and this is not something that we're going to do right away, but one that I've thought of is possibly putting it behind a locked cabinet or door of some sort where a clerk actually had to get the alcohol out in a grocery store or something like that. So I don't know, right now, I think what I'm going to do is just postpone this, let's work on getting the verbiage for what we intended to do first, and then take the next steps later on, because from what I understand, there's several things that we need to change. Is that correct?
Definitely.
Second motion.
Second, I have Councilman Nicholson and then Councilman Flurry.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to thank Councilman Butcher, Agent Cisco, and Chief Raymond for all the work they've done on this legislation. My hope is that in the short term, we can pass legislation that will implement the original purpose of this ordinance, which was to allow liquor stores other than just the couple that are grandfathered in to be able to sell things besides liquor. You know, I just don't see any reason why corks and cuts should not be able to sell meat and liquor or other products. And so I agree that we need to take a step back from this and make sure that we draft legislation that is consistent with our intentions as a body, and that's going to take some time, but I do think we can make that incremental change sooner rather than later, if not today. Thank you.
Councilman Flurry.
And Councilman Butcher, I second. My hope that we'll not delay, try to get it forwarded since...
Well, and, you know, I ran on being a business pro person, and I don't want to hold them up in any way, but I also don't want to pass some type of legislation that would hinder other businesses that are operating right now, so I appreciate your support. Thank you.
All right. Councilman Green.
Chief, have y'all, have y'all started putting those cameras in there? They started putting some cameras in there yet?
One second, I'm sorry. Councilman Green, I'm sorry.
A lot of church people was asking me, have y'all started putting those cameras in there? I was just checking. Not to my knowledge.
They promised me they wouldn't put a camera in my liquor store, Councilman Green.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. So make sure I'm getting it right, so what we're doing is making sure, at the end of the day, then corks would be able to proceed?
Correct. That's the, well, not at the end of today, but...
Well, at the end of the day, when we're finished with...
Once we get a ruling back from Ms. Krill, it's a possibility that there may not have to be any council action taken on that particular, on that particular thing. If Ms. Krill comes back and says, hey, it's okay to sell meats and cheeses along with high content alcohol or spirits, whatever you want to call it, whatever we're going to start calling it, then...
Six percent.
Right, six percent or higher, that's better.
Twenty, twenty.
Then I think that corks and cuts would be ready to go. If not, then the worst-case scenario will be two more weeks.
I'm getting it, it's five seconds.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Krill, for taking it.
So we're postponing, because I agree with Brookshires, I agree with you, Councilman, but I agree with Mr. Stevenson from Brookshires also, so the quicker the better, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So what's the motion down here, just to postpone?
Postpone.
Okay. Do you need to vote on that? That was motion by Councilman Butcher, seconded by the chair, to postpone. There's no discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chairman?
I'm sorry.
No, I was just going to tell you, the legislation is ready. We're going to have a resolution.
We just have a couple more on these ordinances, so let's, can we finish those and then...
We'll come back.
You okay?
I'm good.
Did we all vote?
Councilman Flurry.
Oh, I thought I did.
No, Flurry.
Oh, sorry, it's you.
And that motion passes with seven.
Mr. Chairman, I think we're on ordinance eighty-one now, amending various articles and sections in the City of Shreveport's Unified Development Code and otherwise provided with respect there too. The, Mr. Allen Clark has brought to our attention that...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, clerk. Mr. Mays, you cannot talk loud, it does some interruption with the mics over here, so I'm going to ask, I'm going to ask you to please don't talk while they're recording this. You're interfering with the mic, so it can't record it, okay? I appreciate you. Now, the next time, I'm going to have to ask you to leave out. I'm not being ugly, I'm just telling you, just trying to proceed with the business.
Mr. Allen Clark has asked the council...
Can you ask him to... Thank you.
Has asked the council...
No, let's wait till he leave out, because I don't know if he'll even be able to come back because of that. Yes, all right.
To consider an amendment, number one, to ordinance number eighty-one, because the MPC director requests this action because of provisions of the proposed ordinance as it relates to the annexation standards, conflicts with the other provisions of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Shreveport. So what he's proposing is that you would remove from this ordinance the annexation, that is Article twenty, Annexation Standards, Section twenty point two, which concerns a process in the Shreveport Unified Development Code for annexations. You would remove that, send it back to the MPC for further action, and then you could go on and approve or whatever you wanted to do with the rest of the ordinance. I think Allen is still here, if you would like to hear from him.
Is that okay with him?
I'll make whatever motion is necessary to do what Mr. Clark is...
A motion to amend, I mean, to adopt amendment number one to order somebody with...
And I'll second whatever.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson and seconded by Councilman Flurry. There's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries with seven.
Now, the motion is to remain back to the MPC.
No, amendment number one does...
We've done that.
Amendment one does that?
Yes. So you've adopted that. Now, do you want to adopt the ordinance as amended or any other action that you want to take on the ordinance?
And Mr. Thompson, please jump in if I misstate anything on this, but I believe what we now have before us is what Mr. Arsenault spoke about, which would allow three holders of unbuilt permits to cancel and surrender those and get permits to build billboards in other permitted locations. My perspective on this is, I just, I don't see the purpose of requiring these permit holders to build billboards and then destroy them so that they can, under the present rules, build billboards somewhere else. That's just imposing an unnecessary burden on a local business, and we've had some advice about this ordinance, but I just, I see no harm in doing this Mr. Arsenault has urged us to do, and so I encourage my colleagues to vote to adopt the ordinances amendment. Thank you.
So the motion on the floor. So the motion on the floor.
Oh, I touched your head.
No.
The motion from Councilman Nicholson is to adopt as amended.
Second.
Been moved by him and seconded by Councilman Butcher. If there's no other discussion, please vote. That motion carries with seven. Thompson.
Okay, we're now under ordinance eighty-three, it amends the 2019 street special revenue fund budget.
So move.
Second.
Request to speak.
Councilman Flurry.
Can you tell me what this money's going to be spent?
I can. This funding is going to be placed into the Public Works Department so that they can use it to continue streets maintenance. So this is like, you know, for potholes, you know, repairs.
Potholes.
Right, anytime that, you know, there's any issue that needs to be addressed with our streets. Of course, not major, you know, long overlays, but those small issues.
How much will that account totally have, once this is over there?
I can find out for you real quick.
But you can just email me on it.
Sure, I will.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Butcher. Councilman Flurry, we discussed this two weeks ago in the infrastructure meeting, I believe, or three weeks ago, something like that, but there were several things that the administration brought to us, and Mr. Norman spoke about this and his need for it, so I think mainly it's to help us with the pothole situation that we have, and I mean, I know I've got several streets in my area that need to be taken care of, so that's why I'm supporting it.
So this came from the committee?
This came from the committee. Okay, thank you.
Clarify that.
Yeah.
And Councilman Bradford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and certainly potholes is an issue throughout the city. I think we anticipate hearing how much money will be left in the fund, because I just don't want to go through this year without doing some overlays. We, you heard earlier some people speaking about streets. So I have no problem with this, if we have some funds that could address some of the horrible streets that lies throughout our city, including my district. So I'm supporting the motion, but I'm waiting to see what's left in the fund.
Yeah, I'm looking right now.
I'm sorry?
I'm looking right now, I'll have that to you in just a moment. In street reconstruction, there was not any maintenance money that was budgeted in Public Works for street reconstruction, and I know the department has been using funds that were laid over from last year, you know, to get us through so far. I know in the past, you know, we've used the street special revenue fund to be able to fund Public Works for roadway improvements, you know, of these small nature, so this would be basically the amount that would be there to move forward.
Would you, we get three something million from SWEPCO for a street revenue fund.
Right. Are you talking about in the street special revenue fund?
Isn't that where this going?
No, this is going to Public Works. Right.
Why wouldn't this go into the street revenue fund if that's what it's going to be used for the pothole?
So this money is coming from the street special revenue fund.
Coming from the streets.
Yeah. Into Public Works to fix the... Into Public Works for pothole.
If that's not, we got a conflict here, because SWEPCO said if they would give the additional money on their franchise vehicles...
And that's what's occurring. That additional money is going directly into the street special revenue fund, and so this is just a portion of it that's being transferred to Public Works for the small pothole replacement.
That's what I'm asking.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
Well, you know, I mean, I don't want to delay the meeting, we've been here a long time, but my issue is this, my issue is this. And Mayor, and I tell you often that, you know, six and a half months does not, the type of neglect that we see, and I'm not going to use that word, the unfortunate issues of having the financial capacity to do what we need to do in the city. We have been lacking that capacity, but yet we cannot stop progress. Streets overlays must continue. There are streets in various districts that has not been addressed in years, and the pothole filling is a temporary fix, it's putting Band-Aid on a shotgun wound. Some streets going to need to be corrected through the complete overlay, and that's what I'm hoping that we can, you know, be somewhat conscious of what we think is a good deal for pothole fixing, and let's not waste funds and say, let's do something that we know that needs to be overlaid, okay?
Yeah. No, I completely agree, Councilman. This is because there was no money budgeted for the minor repairs, so we pulled it from the street special revenue fund, but there's still funding in the street special revenue fund that has to be allocated, so this is just a matter of, you know, allocating it for the small things, and you all will determine what we allocate for the bigger things.
Yes.
And budgeting season is right around the corner, so, you know, we can allocate accordingly during budgeting season for fiscal year twenty to make sure that we get enough funding to repair the streets you're talking about.
Sure, but I mean, but still, there may be some projects that may need to...
Yeah, and there's also projects that's going to be...
And if I may, I may just recommend several that I feel that need to be addressed somewhat urgent.
Yeah, I mean, there's multiple revenue sources as well, you know, the general obligation bond as well, there's another place where we're trying to find some resources that we can't pull out of our operating budgets to do so, so, yeah, I mean, we're prepared to execute however Council deems.
And not now, but Patrick, you mentioned yesterday regarding some federal opportunities, and can you email, I mean, are you...
to execute however Council deems.
And not now, but Patrick, you mentioned yesterday regarding some federal opportunities, and can you email, I mean, are you prepared to say something, or can you email us the details about that, because I wasn't clear on what you were saying.
Sure, and that was discussed this morning in the Infrastructure Committee meeting. There's three projects that have federal funds available to, it's an eighty-twenty match, the local match is twenty percent. Those projects are what we're calling Linwood Phase Two and Phase Three. It would take the complete reconstruction of Linwood from Mount Zion up to Seventieth Street, and then there's a Linwood widening project, this also on that list, that has federal funds allocated for it.
Okay. And if I'm to miss the meeting, I've got this information.
So it's eighteen million dollars of federal funds?
That's, that's, that's available. It will become in the Shreveport.
If we put up the twenty percent match.
I'm sure we can find that.
We can find it, but what I'm saying is when we put up that twenty percent match, it's going to limit the rest of the revenue.
Some other revenue sources, okay, I see.
For twenty nineteen.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
I got you. Very good, thank you. And Council Lady, and to the council, unfortunately, some of us do have jobs, and I would actually respectfully ask you and other committee chairs if you would hold the meetings at a convenient time where if we do have a job, we can, we can, we could attend those meetings.
I think we all have jobs, and a couple of our, the colleagues requested that meeting be at that time, so that's what we did.
Well, that's the majority of the wishes of the majority of that.
Was the wishes of the majority to do it at ten o'clock?
Those who can't, can't, those who can, can.
Well, Mr. Chairman?
Calling for the vote.
We're going to vote.
It's been moved by Councilman Nicholson.
No.
I'm sorry. It's been moved by Councilman Butcher and seconded by Councilman Nicholson. If there's no other discussion, please.
Did you? Yes.
We went back and it went to him, but I will put it on green to second, I'm sorry.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, Mayor Perkin.
Yeah, just a quick note, Councilman Bradford, the, so the Infrastructure Committee makes recommendations on legislation, and you all pass it, but also the council, the General Council can make recommendations for the Streets Special Revenue Fund allocations as well, so if y'all can't make meetings, you can always read notes and just recommend legislation even outside of what the committee recommends.
Right. Well, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I know that each council member have the privilege to introduce legislation regarding whatever.
So that's a good point about the notes, did you get the notes from the last meeting that you missed that was at lunchtime?
Say it again.
Wait, no, say it again. Meet me in the back after the meeting.
Did you say catch me outside?
He said, he said catch me in the parking lot. Mr. Thompson?
I believe ordinance eighty-three was seven zero, is that right, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I'm sorry.
Ordinance eighty-four is a companion to eighty-three.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Butcher and seconded by Councilman Green. I'm sorry. Motion carries with itself.
Ordinance eighty-five places a moratorium on the issuance of any occupational licenses and certificates of occupancy for payday agencies, title loan agencies.
So moved.
Second.
And this is including?
Not included.
Okay, not included.
I'm, the pawn shop, strike pawn shop.
Can a, let me ask you this, can a pawn shop still, not a pawn shop, can a payday loan place close? And would they be stricken to open up somewhere else, I mean, move, so they can't move to another, that's what I'm asking, can they move to another? Okay. All right. That's what I need to know, just make sure. Who made the motion? Councilman Flurry, and it was seconded by Councilman Green.
James and James.
There's no, there's no other discussion, please vote. Motion carries, sixth one.
Ordinance eighty-six is an ordinance amendment to twenty nineteen Capital Improvement Budget.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Bradford. If there's no discussion, please vote. Motion carries with itself.
Mr. Chairman, those are all of the items on the regular agenda except for Resolution Number ninety-two. Concerning that matter, we have the following suggestions, to suspend the rules, to add to the agenda a new ninety-two A.
So moved.
And the ninety-two A would be, okay, suspend the rules.
No, I'd like me to read it.
A resolution to increase police presence and effectiveness in District F, to authorize and request the Chief of Police to devise a plan with the City Marshal and the Sheriff, federal authorities, and the State Police to eliminate rampant crime in District F and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. It also removes from the old ninety-two, in the seventh whereas clause, it takes out, quote, constitute a state of public emergency in District F, that is removed, and also in the now therefore being resolved clause, the phrase, a state of public emergency exist in District F, that is removed, and the words, and therefore, so the new ordinance ninety-two A removes those phrases, and the following, and the rest of the language remains.
All right.
So the motion is to suspend the rules to address this, is that right?
Motion by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Bradford. Butcher? Butcher. Y'all starting to look alike.
I'm a little taller, you see that? You're a little taller than, if there's no other discussion, please vote.
Mr. Chairman? That was adopted. Now you have this new resolution to be added, and you need to ask whether or not any member of the public wants to speak in support of or in opposition to the new.
Any member of the public that wants to speak in favor or against?
Adding this.
Adding this to the agenda. I have three, and Ms. John Glover?
There's one over here.
Four.
Do I need to come up?
Yes, please.
I can hear you from out there, but.
Just a three-minute rule, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, three minutes.
I don't need three minutes, but I do need him to reread what he read, because I did not hear him clearly to be able to say yea or nay. Thank you.
You want to stand right there?
I shall do that.
A resolution to increase police presence and effectiveness in District F, to authorize and request the Chief of Police to devise a plan with the City Marshal and the Sheriff, federal authorities, and the State Police to eliminate rampant crime in District F and to otherwise provide with respect thereto. It strikes from the resolution to declare a state of public emergency in District F everywhere it appears in the resolution.
Okay, thank you so much.
Mr. Leston?
Mr. Leston Smith, I'm sorry. I need to announce who I am. Okay, look, I have a problem with this, because first of all, this is not right, it's done without the consent of the people, and I don't think, I think we live in a democracy. I think when things are decided for people, people ought to have a say in them, and to just up and do something, we already have a PPP, we just did a PPP, Preachers, Police, and the People softball game, we just did that. If this thing was coming down the pipe, we should have communicated. Now, when I brought Anthony Child's family down here, my councilman admonished me before this council, I shouldn't have brought those people down without calling him. Sir, you should not have put anything like this on an agenda without talking with the people. You have two neighborhood associations that you could have gotten with, that could have given you some feedback and input. The chief could have given you some in back and feedback as to what we're trying to do. We're trying to do something with the police, just like you're talking about, but we're not talking about coming out there and doing a sweep, and just Motown is the worst place in the world to live. I disagree with it wholeheartedly, and I don't care who don't like it. I've tried to work with my councilmen, but you have to work with people in order for people to work with you, and you just don't do this to people. People's in Motown are hard-working citizens, yeah, they deserve protection of the law, but you ought to bring it to them, you shouldn't just decide because you want to be the drum major out front to be seen when we got the same thing happening, trying to work with the police department so that we can bring about some changes in District F and the City of Shreveport, and you're just going up and do something like this? I think it's a travesty and it's a disgrace to an elected official to do something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, I have.
Mr. Jones first.
Mr. Jones and.
First giving all praise unto God, to the mayor, and to you elected officials, we are glad to be here, and it seems like we have a problem.
Please state your name and address for the reference.
My name is Ricky Miles. My address is thirty-eight oh six Marlboro, Shreveport, Louisiana. My zip code is seven eleven oh nine. Anything else?
That's it, sir.
I give my social security and all that, let me know. Because what I'm saying is very important to me. One young man who got shot by the guy at the funeral, no police officer could have saved his life. That's not going to happen. What we have is a community that's beginning to erupt, and we need to find why it's about to erupt. You can throw policemen all day long, that's like throwing gasoline on fire. We need to get to the heart of the problem. And I, I, I understand, Councilman Green, I understand what he's saying, he got to do something, but we all need to do something, because we need to solve this problem, and it's getting worse, it's not getting better, and no matter what we throw at it, we need to get to the root of it and then begin to work our way out of it, and give the people opportunity to help you work your way themselves out of it. Because this, this is the only city that we got, this is Shreveport, and we can all work together, we don't have to fight, we don't have to argue, but we do need to come up with common solutions to resolve these issues that the common people have. How do you know how they feel if you haven't been out there talking to them? I'm not talking about just seeing them on TV or going by on the street, driving right past them, but get out and talk to them. When I go out and witness the people, I figure, I figure out, first thing I need to do is watch and see how they carry themselves, then I compliment them, then I introduce myself to them, then I introduce them to Christ, because now we, I got a relationship with him, because I'm putting myself out there and I'm looking at them, I'm talking to them. But if you're just going to solve their problem without asking them what is their problem, then you ain't got the problem with what they're doing, and still are trying to find out, what can we fix this problem? How can I get you to understand that you need help? How can I show you that you mentally, you need some medication or something? How can I talk to you and say, well, maybe I can get you a job doing this here, you can't get doing this here, but get, we need to talk to each other, we need to talk to our community, we just can't have jobs sitting behind those desks unless you going out there to those streets, talking to those people who you represent. And it's more than just having council, I mean, meeting with neighborhood association, they don't represent just a portion, you got all their very young kids and everything else, I'm thinking about the next two or three generations behind me, what are these young babies going to do when they seeing us can't get it together?
Mr. Miles, your time is.
I'm sorry.
But we got it, I appreciate you.
Thank you.
I understand, thank you. At Mr. Lynch and Mr. Jones, Mr. Jones, if you want to come before Mr. Lynch, then that's fine.
That's right, Mr. Lynch. Respect the legend of our city right there. Stefan Jones against seven three two one Wingate. I'm simply asking us, as we've done with other pieces of legislation, to have a conversation postponed, and I need you to understand that I'm not against the intent of what you're doing, I just want, I would like for us to have this conversation, I just pull the chief to the side, I think we're going to have our next Neighborhood Association meeting before the next City Council meeting, and it could be some insight that we could give you as a community that may even strengthen what you're trying to do now, so I want to, I just want to clarify that before all of y'all, not just you, Councilman Green, is that I'm not trying to hinder any progress to deter crime in our city, especially in District F where I'm raising my children. However, I feel like as a citizen, we want to be a part of the change in this city, we don't want to sit by and be dependent upon the council or the mayor's administration alone, we want to feel like that you all are hearing what we're saying and that we're being a part of it, you know, my last spiritual reference for the day. I always tell folks, it's your faith that makes you become a participant in your deliverance. It's one thing to say, I want God to change my life, it's another thing to have the faith to want to be a willing participant in that. Prime example, a woman with an issue of blood, she pressed her way to Jesus, so she became a willing participant in her own deliverance. That's what we're asking, when we're having measures such as this, just calm, sit down, have a talk with us, and I understand you have a plan in place, but it kind of feels like that we've been left out of that plan, because many of us feel that we weren't a part of that conversation, especially with the Neighborhood Associations, and I would disagree that the Neighborhood Associations only represent a small portion, we exist to represent everybody, it's up to the citizens, and here's where we come into play, to take part in fixing our community, so we can't complain about Neighborhood Associations if we're not willing to join them, all right? Some of us have joined that, and we're going out and trying to get other citizens to become a part of what we're doing. If we're going to go through the effort of making sure that we invite you all out to a meeting to have these conversations, please give us a seat at the table, we want to be involved in everything that's going on, I feel that it's, it's probably best, although you may disagree, to postpone this, have a conversation with your Neighborhood Association folks, let's sit down, have the chief come by, and we all just have a conversation about it, and maybe what we have to say will strengthen your plan, but a lack of communication can leave room for a lot of confusion, so that's, that's all I'm asking for, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, Mr. Lynch?
Jim, I've been here before. And District F is just a line in the dirt, it ain't no different from one district or another district. I had problems, I served with Shreveport PD, and I was coming down Common Street one day, and radio announcer asked me where was I at? Common Street, I was out of my district. They didn't want me to go downtown, that's too far. I would have been District One. District Three is this way. But it ended up, I wanted to catch this bank robber, which I did do, I don't care where he was, and that's the way that it goes. Happen to you, Mr. Green? We've already contacted the State of Louisiana for classroom training, for security people that crosswalk and people, I got it here. I got the documentation for the churches that need security training, and we already have that. We have the State of Louisiana's security training, Classroom Two and Classroom Second and, First and Second Training, R R R, we got the documentation to do that. But first of all, we have a CC Antoine's September Celebration that I want you to remember, and if you will, Mr. Flurry, I ask you to get this with you, so we can have our dance, police, firefighters, first responders, fall and dance. Any of y'all dance out there? Any of y'all dance out there? You dance?
The council lady did this.
We're going to have our...
She's a good dancer.
Mayor, will you help me with that? Thank you, sir. So we can, citizens can be with each other, learn each other. Otherwise, we'd be up here squabbling and saying the wrong thing and not respecting us. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Lynch, I need you to state, just state your name and address for the record, let's have to get that for the record.
Sir?
I need you to state your name and address for the record.
Jim Lynch, thirty-five hundred Cedar Creek Drive.
Got it. Thank you.
Excuse me, can I...
Did I have any, did I have anyone else to speak? Are you speaking for or against adding this to the...
Babe, I'm just speaking period.
No, 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 I need you to speak for or against. All this...
I, I want, I want, I've been waiting to speak.
For or against?
Oh, I think I might be against it, I don't know.
Okay.
Uh, Latonya Camp, six three five three Crosswind Drive. Uh, I'm here today because I still have not heard...
That's not, that's not pertaining to the ordinance, and I'm not, again, I'm not being ugly, there's either for or against.
Okay, so wait, I'm going to get a chance to speak about my concerns.
Mr. Chairman.
That I came for.
My understanding was, the young lady, the young, the young lady may, may, may have submitted, so what I was going to do, once we finish the legislation, I was going to ask the council, yeah, we can suspend the rules in here.
Y'all don't have to, y'all, you don't have to, you don't have to. I've asked, I've cried, I begged, I pleaded, now I'm for retaliation. You wonder why the murder rate is so high? This is why. And I'm telling you, it could be Barack, it could be Trump, it could be one of you, which I heard the police was involved in my brother's murder, and today's his birthday, a year has gone by, nothing has happened. I'm telling you, so may everybody in here with the, that can hear me, can be a witness, and I don't care about the secret judges, the, the rate going to go up some more, because as soon as I find out who it was, I'm going to commit some murders, and I'm telling you that.
All right. And if there's no one else to speak for...
My rate going up, you don't want to do nothing about it, hey, everybody in here need a drug test, you know that?
If there's no one else to speak for or against, then, uh...
Mr. Chairman, is this gentleman, is he, was he recognized traveling?
Would you all want to speak for him?
When it's time for the go to track?
How you doing? This is my first go around, really, um, my name is Jeffrey, I stay in Moretown.
I apologize, Mr. Jeffrey, I, I didn't see you raise your hand, I saw you.
That's all right. That's right. I was just sitting back and just joining the...
Just state your first and last name again, I'm sorry.
It's Jeffrey Bush. Yeah. I didn't know y'all go this long, but y'all, y'all did some things up there. I don't really know how the process go on what y'all do, uh, how we communicate with each other, but I've been back, you know, a short time, and I seen the, the community and the development of the community, you know what I'm saying? And once I came back, I seen, uh, more houses disappearing, uh, more people without responsibilities for the community, you know what I'm saying? We got a lot of people that do, does a lot of things, you know, in the community, so I try to join that and helping out, you know, the best way possible. But the position of how you characterize the notion for that community is strong. I mean, it's a lot of things going in a lot of different communities, but the wording is strong, because we have our major airport that's right there, and we're trying to do our best to cooperate, uh, good business around it, you know what I'm saying? So the community is a good community, and I think if we be able to work with the police department, I've been trying to really get into the community, uh, neighbor watch, so people can watch each other. So I can't say that I'm against it or for it, you know what I'm saying? I'm kind of sitting back, seeing what it is that I need to speak on, but I thank everybody, and I appreciate your time, and I know it's been a rough one.
Craig Lee, eleven twelve Prospect, uh, Street. I'm for postponing the legislation, I, I have to coincide with Stefan and Lester. Uh, I, I think I have, um, standing in this, in that my great-great uncle started the Moretown area that is, you know, such, uh, in this particular process. I think what happened, I think my good cousin, uh, James Green, is, is well-intentioned, but when you create a plan for an area, and District F is very large, you got several different communities within that particular district, so I think basically the community basically saying, we want to have buy-in and sit down within that overall deal, and then roll out an actual plan, I, I think that's pretty much what, um, they're saying, and that would be a good thing. Uh, secondly, I want to say, crime, um, is, is not going to stop based on more police officers. I, I mean, it's, it's just not, because in order to stop crime, you got to get it to the mind of a potential criminal before he or she commits the crime. So that's a spiritual and that's a cultural thing, more so than it's an economic thing. Uh, one of the biggest fallacies is that, uh, crime is a direct relationship to poverty. Well, I said, the, the poorest that we've ever been as black Americans in this country was February the first, eighteen sixty-five, which was the day after the Thirteenth Amendment was passed. If you go from February the first, eighteen sixty-five, up until nineteen sixty-five, black people weren't killing each other the way that they're doing now, so that's not, and we were poor, we were very poor at that particular point. So we need to focus on preventative measures that deal with spirituality, culture, education, economics, sociomics, and politics. You wouldn't even need the, uh, police department in the capacity of how they actually operate if you had those six pillars of empowerment in place. So we really need to have a discussion on these particular symptomatic ailments before you roll out an actual plan, and then everybody, I think, will feel good, and then Councilman Green will be able to get the approval, um, that he needs with his plan.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. I think that's, if there's anyone else, I think that's it. All right, saying none.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the question now is whether ninety-two A should be added to the agenda.
I'd like to make a motion that it would be added to the, uh, agenda.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Bradford to add to the agenda. Uh, if there's no further discussion, please vote. And that's just to add, correct? Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, the question now is whether or not ninety-two A should be adopted.
I'd like to make a motion on the adoption.
I second, Mr. Chairman.
It's been moved by Councilman Green?
Yes.
Seconded by Councilman Bradford?
Yes.
With discussion from Councilman Bradford.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. And let me, let me address this to, uh, the, the ones that had concern about moving forward with this. As you know, you know, I started a neighborhood association many years ago to address some of the same concerns that it addressed in this, in this resolution. The resolution, contrary to what you believe, is not, is not a plan. It's, it's given Councilman Green, along with the police and other entities, the, the green light to move forward, and I think when he comes to the community, I think he's going to come with, to the community with resources, and I'm, and I'm, and I'm specifically talking about human resources, that could engage the community, engage the various neighborhoods to see what they would consider issues of priority, along with what he has shown us here today in regards to his specific, uh, plan to engage the police, the people, the preachers. I just think we need to give him a chance to move in that direction. And again, it ain't, it's not, it's not, it's not at, at all, um, forcing something on the people, it's, it's, it's given him support of this council and his ability to reach out to various other city departments and entities, because policing is only one, one, one aspect of his resolution. He wants to deal with, he wants to deal with, 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 with jobs and with development in his community, so I just think, you know, we just need to let him go. He, he said earlier that a two-week delay would, uh, would impede his, his, his intention, his progress, so I just want to say, in support of what he wants to do, something that we can use as a model for my community and other communities down the road. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I just want to say that.
Councilman Green?
Also, Mr. Chairman, this legislation is not the plan. It is to open up the door that I will start on my radio show on next Monday, announcing to the community, to my district, for different meetings in different areas. This is not the plan, this is just a talking piece to get it started. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm ready to vote, Mr. Chairman.
If there's no further discussion, uh, please vote. It's been moved by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Bradford, to start the conversation piece with the plan. All right, please vote. Motion carries with five.
Mr. Chairman, uh, ninety-two A has been adopted, we recommend that ninety-two, resolution on the ninety-two be removed from the agenda. So move.
No discussion, please move.
Yeah, I move these second.
The motion by Councilman Bradford and seconded by Councilman Green.
Remove ninety-two, yeah.
Motion carries with seven.
Mr. Chairman, we're now under table legislation, uh, there was some discussion yesterday. It was, uh, Mr. Clerk, and thank you, I, I had said yesterday I was intending to remove, uh, ordinance number sixty-seven because of some work and, uh, community outreach I've been having with our, our fair share coordinator, Mr. Quinn U. Max, and he's here. Mr. U. Max, you want to, I'm intending to remove this, if you have any objections to it, or do you want to make any comments regarding it? Okay, you don't have to. I just, I just want them to know that we have been constant, constant commu... Now, come on up. He does, and he doesn't. I think you want to go home. Good evening.
Good evening.
Me and, um, Councilman Bradford have been in consistent, um, communication about revising the statute. We explored some alternative solutions, so, um, I have no issue with, um, removing this table item.
Okay, thank you, and again, Mayor, you're aware of our, our, our communications, so I'm going to move that we remove this, and either, either the administration, and I told, uh, the director that I'll, I'll be willing to offer the legislation that I think would, would strengthen, um, our share, share...
Yeah, and we support it.
Okay. So, thank you, Mr. U. Max. Chairman, I, I move that we will, we move, uh, this from the table.
I second.
All right. Moved by Councilman Bradford, seconded by Councilman Flurry.
That's ordinance number sixty-seven, twenty nineteen.
That's correct. Please vote. Motion carries with six, one out of ten.
Mr. Chairman, I don't think we have any appeals.
Chairman, real quick. Councilman Butcher?
On the other table legislation that we have, uh, Mayor, are we going to keep this on there for that deputy chief position, or do you want to remove it and then wait until we...
Um, you know what, Councilman, that's been on the agenda so long, I forgot your reservations. I, I can't give you an update to say there's going to be some pretty substantial changes in circumstances over the next couple, couple of months. We have, uh, on Monday, we'll be announcing the police chief selection committee to choose the next police chief, and I would hope that whoever the selection committee recommends and I select would have an opportunity to weigh into this.
Okay.
So, um, it's, it's up to you if you want to just pull it.
Well, I mean, it's your legislation, y'all, the administration put it up, I just didn't know if you wanted it.
Yeah, I, I'm going to, um, yeah, I, I recommend we can take it off, I'll, I'll, we'll, we'll reintroduce once we have more clarity in who the next police chief...
Okay, thank you, thank you. Mr. Thompson? Can we remove, uh, bustin', uh, can we remove, remove the deputy chief, what is that, ordinance number, uh...
Ordinance twenty-six.
Twenty-six, can we, can I make a motion to remove that?
Yes, sir.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Butcher, seconded by the vice chair to remove. There's no other discussion, please vote. And motion carries with seven.
Uh, I don't believe that there are any appeals at this time, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
And I have reports from officers, boards, and committees.
Yeah, okay, I have the reports from, uh, any officer, boards, and committees. Councilman Fuller?
Um, we had a good meeting today, and we're going to be meeting probably frequently for a little while with the infrastructure committee. We went over some of the bond issues, we went over, um, we got to meet with our new project manager and kind of give them some, put them in the hot seat, make them sweat a little bit, but they, they were great. Um, and we had a presentation from Liz Swayne about downtown infrastructure and the issues that we've got there, and we'll be setting another meeting pretty soon. Thanks.
All right, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Butcher.
Uh, Mayor and Mr. Jones, what, what's the timeframe on, on the bond? When, when should we maybe, should I schedule a public safety committee meeting pretty quick where we can talk about the needs? What, what was, what was the vote, when, when were we voting on that?
So I've...
Um, August the thirteenth is the date that we would need some action from council to go, um, proceed with the applications of the state bond commission, so, um, this meeting that's coming up is a pretty hard date if we want to have a November election.
Yeah, and, uh, what I like to, I've been working with the chairman, uh, on, uh, the best way to get feedback and edit the process, and, um, Chairman, correct me if I'm wrong, the chairman is electing that the, uh, the city council go to districts to host community meetings?
Right.
For deliberation rather than it come out of committees, uh, but again, that's, that's up to you on how, how you execute.
Well, I, I had planned to, to do that, in fact...
We have a town hall, so everybody...
I think everybody is doing it. Okay, so everybody, so y'all going to do both? Y'all going to deliberate with town halls and a committee meeting?
Yeah, I think, I think that's a, a good way for us to, to, to bring it out to the public, in fact, I talked about doing one with Councilman Nicholson and one with Councilman Flurry, that, and maybe in Cedar Grove with the four councilmen, the, you know, Councilman Green and myself, and, you know, so that's the plan, but we are kind of talking about some limited time, so we better start moving fast.
For us to be the best, to be informed, we're going to need to have meetings in our committees so that we can go over the things that are pertinent to those committees, and then we'll be better informed to actually have our town halls.
Yeah.
Okay, yep, well, we'll be awaiting.
So I, I'm going to try to call a, a public safety committee meeting next week, and would like for both chiefs, well, they'll be there, I'm sure, but...
Yeah. All right, and down to property standard, I didn't know, did, Mr. Sullivan, did you make it to the environment, of course, today?
They didn't have, they can't...
They did, Council? Okay. All right. I was trying to circle the meeting around that, but okay. Uh, anyone else? Councilman Fuller, I mean, uh, Flurry?
No.
This should sit next to each other.
Mr. Chairman?
Councilman Bradford?
I would be remiss, I think we would be remiss if we didn't thank you, appreciate you for your kind gift that you awarded to council members, I don't know what we did to deserve such honor, but we appreciate it, thank you.
Those are you all's opinions, and it's a little card in there.
Is there a card here for lunch, I mean, dinner tonight at, at, uh...
Not tonight, but it's, it's, we, we are going to dinner, we're going to dinner soon.
Me and the council lady, we hungry.
I'm not hungry, I had a good salad and cookie.
She had a salad and a coffee.
I got ready for today, I wasn't going to let y'all do this to me today.
I hadn't eaten, so I'm going to eat. I hadn't eaten, so I'm gonna eat.
You hadn't eaten, you've been holding a sausage like this today?
I did what today?
You held a sausage like this today, and you didn't even eat first.
You're so busy.
Mr. Thompson, there, Clerk's report?
Uh, we received an appointment from the mayor for the athletic division manager, Mr. Douglas Curry, Jr., and we received, uh, two appeals concerning larken development at Railsback LLC. Uh, those two will be on the next, uh, agenda for a decision by the council on August the thirteenth.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, really quick, city attorney, are you planning on going to an executive session with the council, or have you just spoken to them individually about the, uh, about that matter, the larken matter?
I have spoken to a few of them individually, I, I don't think that we'll need to go into the executive session, but I could reassess it and, and let you know.
All right. Since it's, since it's in my district, call me, I'd like to hear what's going on.
Okay.
All right. Mayor Perkins, is there any other communication? And the council member, any additional communication? Councilman Green? Councilman Bradford?
No, sir.
Wow, okay.